Well, first item on the agenda is a 7-10 hearing for application for site plan approval for retail business at 614 Southford Street. Application is Lowe's Home Center Inc. Continued from last meeting, where we left off, Lowe's gave their presentation and we were looking for new plans and binders which we've gotten. And we're also looking to bring on board our consultants, advisors to review Lowe's plans and to explain what their thoughts are on that. Mr. Thomas is here tonight. Since we've already heard from Lowe's, if it's all right with you, Ray, we'll bring Mr. Thomas up and interpret what his concerns are about the plan.
Okay.
Mr. Thomas, if you could come up and relay your concerns to the board?
We didn't bring in a site plan board, but it might be helpful to have one if the applicant has one available to be able to point to. There would be one here available.
Yeah.
Well, then, setting up a plan just begins to move things along. My name is John Thomas, President of Beals &amp; Thomas, Inc. With me is John Bensley, professional engineer with our firm. Our firm has been a business for nearly 25 years and John has been with the firm for nearly 20 of those years. As you know, we've been engaged to assist the board with the review of these site plans. We haven't had the benefit of the plans that may have been just recently submitted, but we do understand that the plans are basically the same plans that had been submitted back in 2006.
They are the same plans, yeah.
And the application materials are pretty much the same. I'm going to start with some of the landscaping issues because you have some new requirements for landscaping, but I'm not going to get into the details, which we will provide in a written report. Since this engagement has happened in fairly short order here over the last few days, we haven't had a time to go through and prepare a comprehensive report, but we anticipate that that will be in the board's hands for your next meeting on the 20th.
Excellent, thank you.
But with regards to landscaping, overall, the landscape plan does have a much greater amount of plant materials than are required by the bylaw, particularly with regards to the trees on the plan. And I think that's really part of the effort to provide some screening. However, there are some requirements for shrubs and at least by our count or calculation of the number of shrubs that should be provided, there should be about 200, 210 shrubs that should be provided. However, the plan is not very detailed with regards to shrubs, there aren't a lot specified. There are many more trees than are required, but there is the absence of shrubs. So I think that's something that needs to be added to the plan. There are a number of picky details that I don't think it's good use of the board's time this evening to go through, but there are things that just sizing, some information requirements on the plans that we will detail that could, I think, readily be provided by the applicant. They're pretty much standard items. But with that, we see a solid attempt and endeavor to replace the vegetative buffer that exists between the developed site and the residence. It's a very, as the board is probably aware, very mature forested area between the motel development site and the abutting residences. And this came out of some requirements from some of the historic buffer requirements from prior applications. However, the one area that I think some additional information would be helpful is there's a requirement in Section 11.2.3 that existing grades, existing vegetation to be retained and the size and type of such vegetation shall be shown on the plan. And none of these items are shown on the plan. Because there are some very significant trees that abut some of these residences on Linda and Alita Drive that are right along the property line. And the grading, particularly on the northern end of the site, comes right up to the boundary and in other areas. And it would be very important to know which particular trees might be able to be saved. And are there any other special measures that might be able to be taken to preserve some more of the significant ones? Because preserving those existing trees that are 80 feet tall and 24 inches in diameter would be quite nice to have as opposed to some of the materials that are going to take a long period of time to mature. So that's one item that we would recommend in terms of the information that it's beyond, you know, an island should be eight foot wide and maybe it's not and those kind of details. But I think that's a very important one that bears on some of more of the significant issues that the board needs to consider as you go through this plan. A second item that we've evaluated in some detail, and John will get into a little bit more of this, in terms of some of the stormwater related issues, are the slopes on the northern side of the site. There is a fair amount of woodland area between the Massachusetts Turnpike off ramp and--
Let me just stick it up over there.
Oh, sure. End of developed portion of the site, basically this area here. And it's very steeply sloped, has some rock outcroppings on it, and I think this has been noted as glacial till soil, so it's going to have a little bit more runoff than, you know, some of the lower lying areas that don't have the steep slopes and might not be in the sea soil category. And a lot of this water is channelized towards the end of Alita Drive. The pavement on Alita stops about in this area. This portion of the roadway has never been built, but there's a little crease in the contours through here as shown on the plan, and it comes down through this area directly onto this three-on-one slope that's being created for the grading from the site improvements. And there are no provisions on the plan for intercepting this water and keeping it off of the slope. It basically, what is proposed is that water will sheet over this slope and end up in a swell that is on the upper side of a retaining wall and then head in an easterly direction. And that water then is intended to be conveyed as we read the site plan in a 180-degree direction and then run down along the bottom of the wall and then come into a drainage structure there and enter some of, and actually ends up, I think, coming into the infiltration system because it's more or less the clean water, not coming off of the paved surfaces. But our experience in dealing with cut slopes, particularly in till soils, there have been geotechnical investigations here that indicate that there's a seasonal high water table, perched water table in these glacial till soils that you might have some seeps coming out of the hillside. Granted, the ridge is here, but there's not a lot of land further up gradient, but there still is clearly groundwater that is in this portion of the property. And there is potential of that seeping out of the slope, some sloughing and channelizing that flow in little rills that you often see on these sites. Now, that is exas-- that condition could be exacerbated by the proximity of this cut slope to these adjacent residences. You might have some big trees left right along the property line. Those roots for the trees extend from those 80 footers quite a distance out. So as you start to cut here into the side slope, you lose the root systems. Those root systems are holding those soils together on the presently sloped topography, but in combination with groundwater seeps, the overland flow, I think this is clearly an area that we would recommend requires a little bit further study in terms of the engineering and how that slope is going to be stabilized and preclude any erosion, damaged to trees overtopping. And hopefully, if they did fall, they'd fall this way and not towards the property owner's land. And I think John will articulate a little bit more related to the stormwater and some of the difficult things of making water turn 180 degrees. And there isn't a lot of detail on the plans that tells us how that construction will be accomplished. But that's one area of concern that we have for recommended further analysis. One of the things that our peer review is not covering is traffic, so I'm going to be silent on that. And I think what I'm going to do is turn it over in a moment to John. But one of the other key items that I think the board is going to need to look at most detail is some of the groundwater conditions. As you know, you have the recharge zone between the aquifer district and the contributory area, but there it is, a fair amount of sand and gravel soil deposits here. There is a fairly steeply sloped groundwater table to the northern and western portion of the property, and then that flattens out basically in this lower parking area. And one of the, there have been quite a number of test holes, borings and wells that have been installed to help characterize the subsurface conditions. And that's a great benefit to the designers and that they have knowledge of groundwater, bedrock soils in terms of performing their work. And one of the pieces that really hasn't been, in our opinion, fully studied is the seasonal high groundwater table as you come off of this steeper slope where the groundwater, to some of the consultants' reports, have been characterized as a perched condition. Because there are models that we use as engineers to estimate seasonal high groundwater. The most commonly used one in the absence of true readings at a seasonal high during a period, and everybody knows was a high year for groundwater, is what's called the Frimta method. And it is a calculation that one can perform based upon the time of the year, time when the observations were made, in relation to other control wells maintained by the U.S. Geological Survey. Dr. Frimta was a U.S. GS geologist, and it allows one to estimate a correction factor. They're used a lot oftentimes with septic system construction, any other kind of infiltration structures, things that are happening below ground where one needs to know what the high groundwater table might be. The Frimta method is very commonly used by engineers and hydrogeologists to help them better design these facilities for safety and environmental performance. So one thing that was not done is that this Frimta method was modified by the subconsultant that was engaged to help Lowe's with the design. There were some, a modified Frimta method was employed for the area at the infiltration and stormwater detention system, which basically said the seasonal high adjustment was less than would have been if one employed the model in its standard form. And we have not been aware of any justification for making those changes to the model. We've never seen it done in our professional practice. So with that, as an introduction, I'm going to let John kind of take you through some of the details of the engineering and the stormwater systems to better understand.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Just to remind you, John Bensley with Beals &amp; Thomas, and I'm a professional engineer. I had looked through the design plans and a bit of the calculations and test pit logs that were submitted for this Lowe's project. And as noted previously, I have some concerns with both some of the surface water runoff, but more importantly, the groundwater and certainly in the Zone 2 portion of the aquifer here, which is a significant recharge area on this site. Potential impacts to that aquifer as well as how it impacts the site design in the stormwater management system associated with the project. Just a bit about the drainage system doesn't show on here, but there's a closed drain system, meaning catch basin pipes, also roof drains. Generally, the concept is that the applicant and their engineers are proposing to take the cleaner runoff, and cleaner runoff being the roof runoff as well as runoff that comes off of the upland areas, intercept that, convey it around, and put it in an infiltrative drainage system that's underground at the south side of the site here. For other runoff, catch basin, collected runoff from parking areas, a lot of that, they're also collecting in a separate drainage system and putting it into an underground system of pipes, 48-inch diameter pipes, that will essentially act as a detention basin, hold that water, release it at a controlled rate of runoff. And then there is some portion of the runoff as well that doesn't go through that system at all. Either of those two systems that collects in the drainage system over here and just ties down into Route 12 here without either detention or recharge. Overall, the system that the applicant has designed is controlling the peak rates, providing recharge that's suggested by the DEP. The issues that I have with that is I'm not sure that the system's going to work exactly the way they say it is because of some of the influence of groundwater that's occurring in here, as well as some of the surface drainage patterns. One of the issues I have with surface drainage is that all this runoff that comes off of the higher slope up here, down across the slope that John was talking about, hits a swell on top of this retaining wall, flows easterly, it gets pretty steep, the bottom of the swell that comes down here. And then all that runoff is supposed to take a 180-degree bend, come back down along the parking lot into a drain inlet down here that then again goes into this closed drainage infiltration system on the site. There's some details, though nothing specific, of these drainage swales up in here, just sort of showing that there are going to be swales. I think the applicant certainly needs to look at the actual flow rate. The 100-year storm, for example, coming into this closed drainage system from the upland areas is about 10.6 CFS. It's a fair bit of flow. It's shallow, it's constricted down here. There are going to be winter conditions where the swell may get some ice in it and guaranteeing that that water's going to be able to come down a real steep slope, hit an area where there's not much room, take 180 degrees, go the other way. I'm not sure exactly how that's going to work, and I don't think the applicant has really worked that out, so I think they certainly need conditions. We got to make sure that those calculations, the details are appropriately sized to see that that happens, because if that doesn't happen, all this runoff's going to overtop this little curb here, come into the parking lot and make this catch basin seven right here. And that's part of the drainage system that just rushes off the site and ties into the Route 12 drainage system. A, it will see that there's not quite the recharge that they're proposing, nor some of the stormwater detention to mitigate flows, and it could create impacts down here on the Route 12 drainage system. Again, also because of the potential for some erosion up here that John had mentioned earlier, making sure that runoff is appropriately treated and we don't get sedimentation in the runoff. I think probably more significantly of the concerns that I have specifically are about the groundwater impacts. Down in this area where we have the recharge, where it's perforated pipe essentially, where the water goes in, perks out through gravel into the groundwater table, looking at some of the test pits back in here, specifically, there's one test pit that Jaworski Geotechnics had done right in the middle of the infiltration system, where the infiltration system, the invert of that pipe system in there is 578.5 feet in elevation. Jaworski has a boring in there where they observed groundwater at 575, which is a fair bit, it's two and a half feet below the bottom of that pipe, although they have six inches of stone under that, so that observed groundwater is about two feet below the bottom of that stone, which is really the absolute minimum the DEP has in their current stormwater management requirements for offset the groundwater. But when you take the Frimta adjustment factors to that, it actually brings the high anticipated groundwater table up into the bottom of that system. So you're going to do two things. One, you're not going to be providing any treatment to that runoff before it gets into the groundwater table, and we are in a Zone 2 with the drinking water supply. And two, by having that groundwater actually up into the system, when a rainfall comes, a big part of the system capacity is already taken up by the groundwater that's filled it up. Granted, that's not going to happen all the time, but the standard design is looking at the high groundwater table to make sure you have those offsets, and they haven't done that. So I don't think the infiltration system here is going to operate the way that they've said. The solutions are, I'm not here to propose, but to point out the concerns that I have. And then to the west of that is the underground storage, 48-inch culverts that are in there. Again, there's groundwater testing, monitoring wells just to the north of that system as well as to the south. I've identified a couple of those. One is JB, which is, I believe, it stands for Jaworski Boring. 116 is the number that may identify, observe the elevation of the groundwater there at 575.5. And then down here, JB 111, they actually observed that groundwater at 579.5. The bottom of this system is 578.5, so just next to that system, there's an actual observed groundwater that's a foot higher than the bottom of the system. And when you apply Frimta adjustment factors to that, it pushes it up even more. That's not as significant for the system that's the pipe storage because you're not infiltrating out of it, but the concern that I have with that is they've got these tight pipes that are in that water table, and when the water table comes up, pipes can float even in the ground. So there's a buoyancy factor in there, and these pipes may actually float, and literally they can float within the ground and push the pavement up. So I think that's certainly something that needs to be looked at in much more detail and we need to be able to justify that design. The numbers that I've looked at with Frimta shows that they are going to be in groundwater there.
Through the chair, Dave, I just asked one quick question.
Sure.
When you say observed groundwater, is that actual groundwater or modeling?
That's actual groundwater.
Actual groundwater.
Yes.
Do you have dates when the testing--
I believe it was February of '04. There's some various dates, but it's all in the Jaworski reports and the data. I have it in my briefcase, I can give it to you. I don't have--
I was just curious, was modeling--
I believe it was February '04.
The actual water?
Yes.
Thank you.
It was actual water. Other issues with regards to the groundwater that will likely happen in here, and I think we may see the evidence of it just because there is some variability in the groundwater. And typically, down in this lower sandy region of the Zone 2 where the soils are better, the groundwater you'd expect to be fairly level to be there. There's fluctuation, and that may be because what's happening out there is the current development in any drain pipes or trenching that's out there. Water may be flowing into some of the utility trenches, doing some real localized de-watering out there. The reason I mention that is because throughout this site, they're going to be doing a lot of trenching. A lot of the drain pipes are down into the groundwater table that's out here, not just the observed groundwater, but the Frimta, well, not just the Frimta groundwater, but the observed groundwater. And what can happen with that is when you've got a utility that starts back here, it intercepts groundwater, that groundwater tends to flow within that utility trench. It takes the easiest route, and you're packing under utility trench gravel typically is a bedding. The water can flow through that. If you're intercepting all this groundwater, flowing it through particularly into the infiltration trench here in the drainage system, that's going to be a constant supply of water into the infiltration trench, which will tend to mound the groundwater table under that because it has a constant flow going into it, which will even further exacerbate that high groundwater table in there. I'm pointing that out for two points. One is, there's solutions to that. They can put trench dams in there, essentially impervious clay dams throughout the trenches at appropriate intervals so that the water doesn't flow through there. But also, what can happen, this is the town's drinking water supply. This water, what you're trying to do is recharge the system, some of it, if they divert it, it goes in other locations. Instead of getting back down into the ground, it's flowing through these trenches and eventually will discharge off-site. You're cutting down the drinking water supply recharge that the town relies upon for the wells in the site or in the town, so that needs to be made sure that that won't happen. And that's the significant concerns that I identified during my review out here on the site, I believe, again, that probably my, the biggest concern that I have is with regards to the groundwater down here within their stormwater management drainage system, particularly the infiltration system, and whether or not it truly will function as it's intended to.
All right, thank you very much.
Answer questions.
All right. Any other questions? Any other items by Mr. Thomas at all? Is that everything complete? You guys are all set?
Yep.
Okay. Yes.
Well, if the board has questions, they should ask them, then I have a couple.
Guys, any questions?
Really laid it out pretty clearly there.
All right. Ray, you have questions?
Yeah, John, you may be aware that there's a disagreement between the applicant and the board's counsel over whether the new bylaw, Section 11, applies. But just so we're clear, one of the standards that appears in Section 11.3 is that the buffer between the residential district and the, so that would be the north and east corner, needs to be a minimum width of 25 feet.
That's correct.
Do they meet that?
They do meet that, and that's based upon an interpretation in the way we've read the bylaw, Section 11, that it's not the preservation of an existing buffer because it details that you can come in and plant a natural buffer at that location. At least, that's the way we would read that. I'm not sure what the board's intent was, but that's how we've viewed that, that the buffer can be planted with the specified number of trees.
Okay. And the, in the, the park and ride lot is, you know, on a separate parcel.
The commuter lot?
The commuter lot, yes, is in a separate parcel. You were aware of that?
We haven't gotten to that level of detail.
Okay, all right. So you haven't really looked at the buffering and screening between those two lots?
No, we have not.
Okay, all right. And have, it's all right that you haven't. I mean, you only got hired on Friday, so the fact that you got that, that you've-- I mean, you only got hired on Friday, so the fact that you got that you've been able to say anything intelligent today is pretty impressive. Did you get a chance to look at the requirements for landscaping on the parking lot itself?
No, we have not.
Okay. All right. Those are things you're going to look at at some point.
Definitely. Like, as I noted, we will be providing a more comprehensive review, but just on the initial overview of the site plan, these are the items that we felt were most germane to the board's meeting this evening.
Okay. All right. Would the applicant like to maybe rebut some of Mr. Thomas's concerns?
If we could. Have Ed.
Thank you. How are you?
Great. Nice to be back.
Nice to have you back.
For the record, my name is Ed Boito, civil engineer and senior project manager with Tetra Tech Rizzo. I'd like to respond to several of the comments that were made by Mr. Thomas and Mr. Benzley. First, Mr. Thomas was...
Excuse me. Just a minute.
Yes.
Sorry. Ed is going to respond, but we, going to have to respond, we understand that we don't believe that Loews' position is that the bylaw, the new buffering and screening and landscaping bylaw doesn't, doesn't apply to this plan. But Ed is going to make some...
Right. And that was my first comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Thomas did reference the landscape bylaw and is Loews' position that that bylaw does not apply to this project as the project was grandfathered under the, prior to the bylaw coming into effect. Mr. Thomas did reference the fact that certain sizes and types of trees should be identified, even under the, I guess, under the proposed bylaw that will be saved. I did want to point out that the existing condition survey that Loews provided as part of the site plan application did include the location in size and type of all trees over six inches in diameter, and those are individually shown on the existing site survey. And clearly, Loews' intent is to save as many of those trees, especially along the residential abiding property lines, as possible. And clearly, on a project like this, there needs to be specific instructions given to the contractor in terms of how that's going to be accomplished in the field. And it's one of the reasons why we provided some flexibility and latitude in the design of the project in terms of the slope, because we know that soil conditions may be different in the field, depth of groundwater, groundwater conditions, depth of bedrock. And one of the first things, as I mentioned in my presentation a week ago, that preliminarily, a limit of work line would be established in the field, individual trees that we believe we can save or earmarked to be saved will be identified. Those will be evaluated in terms of the expected root zone and what kind of protection area those trees need, and that those areas would be fenced off prior to the start of any construction or earthwork on the site, and Loews is committed to do that. Mr. Thomas mentioned the fact that more trees are being planted than is even required under the new bylaw, and he mentioned something about shrubs, that maybe some deficient number of shrubs. And I did want to reiterate, as part of my presentation last week, I identified the fact that in addition to the trees, that will be maintained along the residential property lines, Loews is proposing a continuous evergreen, a row of evergreen trees along that property line. In addition to that, additional evergreen and deciduous trees and shrubs and conservation grass would be planted along that slope, and in all, some 300 trees and shrubs will be planted just on the slope between the edge of Loews' property and the adjacent residences. And those would work in conjunction with the proposed noise attenuation wall, and together they would provide, and granted, there is a vegetated buffer screen, visual screen that's there now, having been on Lita Drive and Linda Avenue many times, both summer and winter, I know that that screen does provide some benefit to the butters during the summertime, and during the wintertime, however, that those trees are high enough that the canopies are high enough that one gets a direct view from those residences into the site during the wintertime. And our position would be that the planting of our evergreen screen in conjunction with the noise attenuation wall will provide both, will provide a year-round screen to the residences that immediately above the property. Mr. Thomas talked about interception of surface water coming down along the slope. He seemed to suggest that there should be some kind of interceptor swale or drainage collector along that slope. That is, we are not proposing that. We are proposing a swale along the top of the cut slope or the rock slope, if you will, that will intercept surface runoff coming down, and then will direct that water down to the lower portion of the site and into the drainage collection system. It's our view that if the existing slope that's naturally vegetated, that will remain, is well-stabilized, and we also propose a well-stabilized slope as well. And the way our grading works is that we are intending to reinforce sheet flow or diverse flow pattern across that slope. We believe that, especially with the types of soils, that it's much better not to concentrate that flow and collect it into a, some kind of interceptor swale, because now you're dealing with concentrated flows that potentially will cause erosion and sedimentation along that slope. We believe it's much better to have sheet flow coming down across that slope and then be collected at the top of the rock cut and then being collected into the, into the site drainage system.
And is it possible to put some drainage up there to catch the flow and pipe it down?
Well, the geotechnical engineers report recommended that as the surface runoff gets intercepted in a swale on top of the rock cut, that we provide a swale system to collect it, and we also provide some kind of crushed stone stabilization, so we would have five, I think they recommended five feet of a stabilized zone such that any surface flow or groundwater that would be intercepted would be, that's, would protect the slope against erosion before it would get intercepted into the, into the swale. So we're not proposing to pipe or collect runoff into a pipe system up there, we're trying to maintain natural sheet flow as currently exists on the site and then direct it down to...
So are you saying Loews is opposed, they will not put any drainage up there to collect?
We have, we have provisions in our grading plan to allow sheet flow to be maintained. We're collecting the water in a drainage collection system that's proposed on our plans and is also recommended by the geotechnical engineer, both geotechnical engineers that Loews engaged on the property, and we believe that that is the preferred solution that would minimize the potential for any further erosion on that slope. So it's not that we're, we're not, it's not that we're, not that we're refusing to do it, we're saying that we have a solution that we believe is the appropriate solution to this solution.
Right, but I mean, you heard, I mean, Beals and Thomas is certainly a reputable outfit also, as Rizzo is.
Well, well, we engineers typically, when we, when we get into a site, and I would be the first one to admit that this has complicated site issues and complicated engineering issues, we defer issues with regard to soils, groundwater, bedrock, how soils are going to behave, how groundwater is going to behave during construction and after construction to someone who's qualified in such matters, and those are typically geotechnical engineers. I'm not aware that Beals and Thomas are geotechnical engineers, having known Beals and Thomas, I'm aware that they are not. Loews, on the other hand, has hired two geotechnical engineers, one to be the, who has done all of the site investigations, have come up with recommendations for the design, which is Jaworski. And then Loews hired the firm of Haley and Aldrich, who are preeminent geotechnical engineers, not only locally but nationally and internationally, to peer review the design of the site and also to look at issues such as slope stability. And I believe that I referred to their report, it's been submitted to the board as part of our site plan application, and I just wanted to, if I might... This is Haley and Aldrich's report, which has been submitted to the board. They concluded in their report that the soil and rock slopes can be constructed and maintained in a stable condition without undue risk to off-site properties. And they also concluded in their report, and this is a quote, that the proposed design is both reasonable and appropriate. Both Mr. Thomas and Mr. Benzley talked about groundwater conditions on the site, and I think it's, it's important to understand that there is a significant slope, I think there's some 66 or 70 feet of slope differential existing grade within the proposed work area between Southbridge Street and the northwest corner of the building. I think the slope differential from one end of the site to the other is over, over 100 feet, and we have varying soil conditions. We have soils that are indicative of the Zone 3 aquifer recharge area that is more typical of glacial tills, shallow glacial tills over bedrock, and typically you have groundwater that flows along that bedrock condition. You have others, vary, you have other soil conditions that are more indicative of the Zone 2 aquifer recharge area that's in the southeast corner of the site, where you have a much more stabilized groundwater conditions and soil conditions that are more indicative of sands and gravel. And to pick one location on the site where one test was done, and it's clear in the geotechnical reports that the geotechnical engineers characterize a site in certain areas that are indicative of having perched groundwater conditions because of the varied soils. There were 50 borings and test pits done on the site, and I would have to say that my recollection is that of those 50 borings and test pits, only half of those borings and test pits that they even encountered groundwater on the site. So half of them, they did, even deeper borings never even encountered groundwater on the site. And of those that did, of those 25 that did, I think only one encountered groundwater under existing groundwater conditions that were less than 10 feet observed groundwater to existing grade. As far as the design of our drainage system as it relates to that high seasonal groundwater condition, there were, were adjust, they were based on the tests, field tests that were done, there were adjustments to groundwater levels using the frifter method to estimate the high seasonal groundwater level in accordance with DEP regulations. And we do have proper separation between the infiltration system and that estimated high seasonal groundwater condition. And I also would remind the board that this drainage system was peer reviewed by the ZBA's peer review consultant, Graves Engineering, did an exhaustive review of the drainage system for several reasons. One was to make sure that it was designed in accordance and met all of the standards of DEP in terms of their stormwater policy. And secondly, there was a concern to make sure that the aquifer, recharge aquifer, which is the town's upstream from the town's water supply, was adequately protected. And I would remind the board that Graves Engineering reported in their findings that both of those things were the case, that they, that the design of the drainage system was done in a fashion that met or exceeded the state's stormwater policy, and that the town's drinking water supply in the groundwater act for was adequately protected, not only based on the drainage system design, but based on other measures that Loews is proposing to institute on the site, which includes other measures to prevent any kind of pollutants from entering the drainage system into the aquifer. I think that is my initial responses, without having their comments in writing, those are my initial responses to their comments.
Could you answer me one more question?
Sure.
Again, I know enough to be dangerous, I'm just throwing it out there. It seems like there's a question about the frifter method and the modified frifter method. When does the modified frifter method kick in? And is that a standard?
My understanding is that Jaworski looked at the nature of the soils on the site, the time of the tests that were done, the depth of the groundwater, and chose a method that they believed would adequately and accurately reflect a reasonable estimate of what the high seasonal groundwater condition on the site would be. And I have no reason to believe that they were in error in doing that. I think they're geotechnical engineers for the most part, as you probably know, being an engineer, are very conservative in nature. And again, that analysis that was provided in a geotechnical report to determine high seasonal groundwater was peer reviewed by Graves Engineering specifically for compliance with DEP stormwater policy, and they concurred with all aspects of the drainage system design in meeting those standards.
But is there a specific criteria that goes to a modified frifter method, or is there not? I honestly don't know.
I don't know.
Okay. All right.
It's clearly spelled out in the geotechnical report, which was provided to the board as part of our application.
Okay. Is there any other questions, Ben? Ray, any questions?
I'm all set.
All right.
I think what's appropriate is to continue the hearing till next week.
Then to finish their...
Beals and Thomas.
Beals and Thomas now. We'll be able to provide a sub-written report before next week, and so we'll have a more complete understanding from them, by them.
Sounds good. All right. In the meantime, we'll get more of a chance to talk to Mass Highway to find out where the actual permit is as far as the Route 12.
Okay. Out of it.
Good, Dave.
Sure.
I did talk to Mass Highway, and they indicated that they've received 25% review and approval, but they would still need to submit 75 and 100% plans to get their permit.
Okay. All right. Any other questions by the board? Any public comment? Yes, if you'd like to give your name and address for the record?
Mike DeRosa, Brookhouse and Way here in town. Lifelong resident, family raising in town. Loews seems to be in a business zone, straining the water sewer in the school department, be less than the previous hotel, there'll be traffic, they seem to have a well-engineered traffic plan, however. And if I'm not mistaken, the police and the fire department signed off on the...
No, they're both opposed to the site.
They're both opposed to the site, they are, okay. Also concerned about the escalating legal expenses incurred by taxpayers arguing something that legally has a rate to set up shop. With our dual tax rate in town, the revenue from this project would bring much needed dollars to the town's coffers, the minimal impact on town services. So ask you to consider in whole what I stated in making this decision. It'd be beneficial to the town.
All right. Is there any other public comment? All right. If being none, is there a motion to continue this till the... If being none, is there a motion to continue this till the twenty?
I'll make it.
Yes, the twenty. At seven-ten?
We can do it at seven, because it's a special meeting, so.
Okay, sure. Seven o'clock. The motion is second.
Right.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? It is a vote. All right. Thank you.
On post.
Yep.
After liquid.
Yeah, it's just a discussion.
Two weeks.
Twenty-seven.
It's a special meeting.
Board had any.
It's only a discussion. It's only a discussion. We were supposed to get something back from town council. We don't have it yet. And whatever help you can get, we'll try to get that so we can move on.
Adam.
So.
I'm sorry.
I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay.
We can set up a time.
Guys, thank you for coming.
Thank you. See you next week.
Mr. Poytho, always a pleasure. Have a good evening.
See you next time.
Yes. John and John. We're going to put the discussion on.
South Hold, I have number eight on the twenty-seventh.
Sounds good. What else is on the twenty-seventh?
Right now, I have request for a lot release at Prospect Hills at seven-oh-five. Mr. Stelma is dropping off the request tomorrow, and the cell tower at the Auburn Mall at seven-ten.
Okay. Section. Yeah, I think I just, if the hearing for Ashworth Hills and Auburn Hills, I just soon put those before also.
Okay, sure. Well, since we haven't continued it to that date, since we haven't continued it to that date yet, we can make that decision next week. And they obviously are here this evening to continue to that point, so we can make that decision then.
All right, good. There we go. All right, next item on the agenda? I did. The board has it. Is an eight o'clock public hearing for the application of Oxford Realty Trust by Edward Pesci for a definitive subdivision plan for a twenty-seven lot subdivision known as the Reserve at Ashworth Hills. Good evening, guys.
Hey, how are you?
Excellent. All right.
I don't think there's much. I think you wanted to hear from the consultants who were here.
Yes, yeah. Actually, I was looking for our main man, Mahatma Heed. Welcome back.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's nice to be back.
And I was really looking at your thoughts and the analysis. If you could explain to us how traffic is going to flow through this site with the additional traffic, with the additional entrance, because the last time we looked at this site, there was not the second entrance onto Route 20.
That is correct.
So I was wondering if you could, maybe we could put this, do we have a board of this, of the site?
Oh, no, I do not. Do you have a big hang in?
What's that? L I ever planned. Yeah. Yeah, if we could, I'm just curious where things are going to flow.
Okay.
Just so I can get it in my own mind. You want to put it up, or you want to? Actually, maybe if you, maybe, because this is going to be hard to hold up, maybe if we put it on the table and you can kind of point it out, I guess. Do we have an overview map here? There it is. Well, it doesn't show Oxford, though. Do we have it?
That shows just over.
Do we have one with Oxford and Auburn?
You should.
I believe I have one.
Okay.
Chris couldn't come to me yet for our committee, so. How do you come? I'm sure he brought you the nice color version.
Is it in this plant, set of plants, or is it another?
No, it's in the full overview plan showing both, because that second exit that you're referring to.
Yeah.
You can see it on that site drawing there. I can kind of point to it, but, you know, I don't know that'll, but basically.
It's not on the, this mini plan here, right?
No, but here's your town line split. Here's where Blaker and Albert Street is on this side, and come around. And this is the commercial piece right here, this white section here. And so this, basically where this pointed arrow is, is approximately where that road will come out. And then you obviously have the other entrance, which is right, right next to this white cutout here. So one here, one here, and one here. So those are your three egresses to the site, to give you some point of reference.
Sure. Let's see if I can. Well, I can start.
Traffic report has it in there.
Yeah, I think.
Has a temp or a sketch plan that shows that.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, it's in one of the things that Lloyd did for us. I mean, it's an eight and a half by eleven, you know, but it's, but it at least shows all three.
Is the traffic report in there neatly organized? I was very impressed by that, by the way.
Well, there was so much stuff that I just wanted to.
You did the memo, the latest memorandum. It might be, it might be a trip. There we go.
Yeah, it's in the section.
The simplified sketch, of course, showing the trip distribution, but.
Supplemental traffic findings dated October twenty-fourth to Mahatma Heed from Lloyd. And you can flip through, and you can see, helps you talk off of it.
I don't have the overall, do I? Just have the.
Traffic flows to the different intersections, right?
There's not an overview.
Commercial traffic. It's just the, oh, traffic findings. I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, see, I think this is just the different intersections being shown. It shows going up to Rochdale. There you go. Yeah.
Yeah, that comes down, that's.
That's the.
That's twenty. Okay. This is Blaker, Albert.
And that's Ashworth on this side over here.
All right.
No, that's fine. For the record, my name is Mahatma Heed Creamy. I'm the Director of Traffic Engineering Services with VHB, and certainly appreciates being returned by, retained by the, by the town to do a peer review on this project. I'd just like to kind of back up a little bit and give you a little bit of a history on how we got to this point, where we're going to talk about as far as some of the conditions that we have drafted for the board's consideration. Back in November, October, November, when VHB was retained by the town to review the technical analysis for this project, as you recall, this project really started years ago, before, before October. And we had done a fairly comprehensive evaluation of the, of the traffic distribution on the town's roads and intersections. When we met with the, with the town prior to our work with, under the new application, we had asked the applicant and their consultant to provide us with all the supplemental information that they had submitted. So they have done a fairly, a good job as far as documenting the analysis and some of the things that I've worked with, with Adam and Bill, making sure that they address all of the issues that we had previously reviewed, and plus all the new issues that has come before us because of so many things that happened in and around the project site. So back in November fourteenth, I have provided to the board a technical memorandum, basically summarizing my review of their work with the supplemental information that the applicant had provided. And as a result of that review, I had provided to the board a venue of the mitigation that I felt was, was needed to offset any impact that this development will have on the town roads. And that venue was summarizing that technical memorandum, and really the, the conditions that have been drafted for the board's review and consideration is really as a result of the review that we have completed, as a result of numerous meetings we have had with the applicant, with both the planning and engineering department, as well as the town of Oxford, and an applicant working with us and understanding some of the things that we have, we had issues that needed to be addressed. And I think they've done a credible job drafting what I consider is a, is a good start for our discussion with the board as far as the mitigation and their commitment to the, to those mitigation. So I'm not going to get into the detail of the, you can talk at the latter point of our discussion about those conditions, but I know, Mr. Chairman, you asked about the project. Basically, we're talking about three access points, two in Oxford, one off of Route twelve twenty, and the other access off of the Ashworth Hill Road, and a third access on the Oxford side, which is connecting to Blaker Street. Those are the three access points that's going to serve this development. Way back when, when we discussed the, the number of access to the, to this, to the site, we thought that we are better off to distribute that traffic amongst several points as opposed to loading a particular road or a particular area. So I think, based on that discussion, the applicant obviously came up with a design of connecting that third access onto Route twelve twenty. There was some discussion about how that access was going to be designed and how it was going to operate. Again, we have talked about both as a short term and long term. Short term, we talked about restricting access to a right and right out because of the conditions we have on Route twelve and twenty during the peak hour. It would be extremely difficult to make a left turn out of that driveway, and I think the applicant has agreed to, to that condition. The access on the Oxford side, on Ashworth Hill, certainly that's going to be the first part of the project that's going to be using. There are some conditions we have put on that access as well, and some mitigation as far as when that, that, that development or that portion of development that's going to be happening in that area. The access, the access onto Auburn side, which is off of Blaker, again, is going to be restricted to certain conditions that needs to happen. And again, all that stuff has been spelled out in this memorandum of understanding. I'm not even sure if you have a copy of it.
I don't have a copy.
It's in, it's in the.
Okay.
It's in the draft form right now for the board's consideration. I can pretty much highlight some of the key things in that, in that memorandum of understanding. But I think we have at least a menu of, of action items that, that I think it's, it's, it's some that addresses the mitigation and some of the impacts that this development will have on, on the roadway system. In addition to what we did back in November, the town of Oxford also requested us to look at the functional classification of the main road that connects Ashworth Hill to Route twelve and twenty. Basically, the main road that, that connects or goes through the center of the development, whether or not that road should be classified as a local road or a rural collector road. And, and it has implication as far as how you design that road from a geometric point of view and from a classification. And we drafted, I did review that, that issue, and I did draft a memorandum to the board in Oxford, as well as to you, basically highlighting, reviewing the roadway in conformity with the guidelines for residential subdivision, street design, which is a publication that's, that's through the Institute of Transportation Engineers, is widely used throughout the country. But at least we had something to go by. We looked at the bylaws, we looked at the guidelines, and certainly my recommendation was, with the amount of traffic that this development is going to generate, that road will be classified as a rural collector road, with the amount of volume that's going to be using and what's going to be serving. And based on the guidelines and criterias that's used, my recommendation was to have a roadway width of twenty-four feet with a maximum grade of ten, ten percent. I'm not really sure how that issue was addressed, but that was a recommendation that I made to the, to the, to the officials in Oxford, and certainly a recommendation to you. And that was described in this memorandum that's dated December thirtieth, two thousand and eight. Based on the review that I did and the conditions that we had discussed, I'm just going to kind of briefly go down the list of conditions that, that we have basically agreed upon for your consideration. The, the first two items relates to the funds for the engineering design of Route twelve and twenty. The applicant has agreed to contribute a lump sum of money, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, as the first amount that's going to be deposited into escrow account for the, for the initial kickoff of the design of that project. And the second, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars will be deposited upon the twelve month anniversary. So there will be two hundred fifty thousand dollars going to be contributed towards the, the engineering design of Route twelve and twenty. The applicant has also, will be providing to the town a payment of a hundred and forty thousand dollars prior to the issuance of the sixth building permit in Auburn. They talked about in lieu of widening Rochdale Street between the railroad bridge and West Street for approximately eighteen-hundred fifty linear feet. And again, this contribution is at discretion of the town. That could be used to reimburse any cost paid for the widening of Rochdale Street for, even for the design of Route twelve and twenty, if needed. The applicant has also agreed to completing the construction improvements at Albert and Blaker Street per our recommendation and the recommendation that Callen had upon issuance of the eleventh building permit in Auburn. So that was a condition that, that the applicant had agreed with, and we did not have any objection as long as they do certain things. One of the key things was, we wanted to make sure if, if there were any additional impact on the Auburn, that Route twelve and twenty signalization be implemented and constructed. And if not, then the applicant will explore, explore the install, is on, design and installation of a channelized island and sidewalk at the Route twelve and twenty and, and Albert Street, I'm sorry, Blaker Street, to, to allow right turn, right, right turn in and right turn out at, at Route twenty and Albert Street. And again, that is subject to the review and approval by the Mass Highway Department. And that condition is also, is based on having the twelfth building permit in Auburn. And one of the things that they have stipulated in that condition is that we have also recommended putting stop signs, speed zone signs, and stop lines at some of the streets on Blaker Street, Tinker Hill Road intersection, and Maple Street, Tinker, Tinker Hill Road. And that condition was put upon the construction of so many units on the Auburn side. I feel that the, that safety improvement should be done, not so much in conjunction with the issuance of the eleventh building permit, but the condition that basically says that when they put, when they get sixth building permit in Auburn, I believe that safety improvement should be done. It's not really a capacity issue, it's a safety issue. So I would like to suggest that we move item C, which is, which is a condition of, of number four, we move up to the item three, which is the issuance of the sixth building permit in Auburn, that the applicant should be installing those safety improvements. Condition number five basically discusses developer will start the Ashworth Drive improvements from Rochdale to Oxford Town Line. Within twelve months of the issuance of the certificate approval, all appeals having expired and plans being endorsed in suitable form. And that is a condition that, that certainly relates to the development on the, the Oxford side. And, and also, as part of that condition, the developer will also be installing all ways stop control at the intersection of Rochdale-West, West Street intersection. Now, as you recall, Mr. Chairman, that was an intersection that we looked at in the prior application. And as a short term mitigation, our recommendation was to provide an all-way stop, and I think that would provide more capacity and also provide more safety to that intersection until such time that that land is available to realign.
And widen.
And widen West Street. And I think that would be really a, a long-term solution for that, for the approach. But as a short term, I think it will go a long way to, to provide additional safety and capacity at that intersection. Item number seven, the applicant will be doing the survey of pavement and layout dimensions for twenty-four hundred feet of Rochdale Street for town use. And, and again, that condition is, is attached to the condition that's stated in number three, which is. capacity at that intersection. Item number seven, the applicant will be doing the survey of pavement and layout dimensions for 2,400 feet of Rocheville Street for town use. And again, that condition is attached to the condition that's stated in number three, which is the contribution that they are making to the town as part of the $140,000 for the, under that item. Item eight, the applicant will also going to be contributing the survey and the layout for Ashworth Drive, and that would be prior to commencing construction of Ashworth Drive. Condition number nine, the applicant has contributed the pavement survey and determined that the layout for 920 feet of Albert Street for town use prior to commencing widening of Albert Street. Condition number 10, the applicant has contributed the pavement survey, determined for layout for 1,000 feet of Blaker Street for the town use prior to the commencing construction on Blaker Street. And condition number 11, the applicant will be negotiating, under that condition, the applicant negotiate a purchase and sale from Lynn Lessard at corner of Albert Street and Blaker Street rounding the corner and installing the improvements as what was recommended at that intersection. Condition number 12, the applicant agrees that the connection to Oxford will provide access to Blaker and Albert Street for town homes approved in Oxford. Will not occur until the latter of the issuance of the 185th building permit in Oxford or four years for coordination with Route 12 and 20 design improvements. And the reason for that was basically, we wanted to make sure, and one of the things that I, we talked about with the town officials, with both Bill and Adam, was we wanted to make sure that there is enough time for the design and construction to happen on Route 12 and 20 before they connect the Oxford portion to the Auburn side. And I think that's going to give us enough time for that to occur. And then the applicant can then connect the two sides of development upon installation of the proposed traffic signal at the intersection of Albert Street and Route 20. The applicant also has agreed to pay a one-time fee of $20,000 per detention basin, and that's going to be primarily used for the permanent maintenance and repair by the town for that particular use. The applicant has also agreed to provide a breakaway gate at the Oxford Town Line once the roadway work has been completed sufficiently to allow emergency access to the reserve at Ashworth Hills in Oxford. And one of the concerns that we had obviously was emergency vehicles to be able to get to the development from both Auburn and Oxford side, but we did not want to have any traffic, vehicular traffic using the Auburn access until such time that we are comfortable with all the mitigation or improvements on Albert Street and Blaker Street. And then the last, I believe the applicant has agreed to provide certain design for the overflow swell, which assumes a groundwater depth of one foot with additional foot of coverage added. And I believe that was something that the town's consultant had requested. Basically, this memorandum of understanding is something that has been, has been in the draft form for the board's consideration. I feel that they have addressed all the issues that we have had as far as making sure that the applicant has adequately mitigated the traffic impact on both the Auburn and Oxford side. And I believe that the contribution that the applicant is making towards the engineering design for Route 12 and 20 makes really the, really accommodates what the development needs as far as making sure that the improvements can happen and the capacity and safety is there for this development when it's fully constructed and operational. So that is really our work for the past three or four months, working with the town officials and the applicant. As I said, they have pretty much addressed all of my concerns, and I think if there is something that the board want to consider or making some changes, we can certainly discuss that. I'm here to answer any question that you may have.
Any board questions?
Just, Bill, you reviewed these.
Yes, I have. We've had several meetings, a couple of months ago, all these issues.
Any other board questions?
Bahid, I was really looking for you to come in and explain to me the traffic patterns. When we originally, before these gentlemen took this project over, when we originally agreed to connect the Oxford Road to the Auburn Road, it was because there was no other access point to Route 20. And all the Oxford project would go out Ashworth, and we felt go down Rocheville Street, go down West Street, and we didn't want that to happen. So we figured the quickest way was to get them right out to Route 20, through Auburn, right through 20, and it would save Rocheville Street and West Street and that whole bit. Now, with this second entrance, I guess I'm looking for you to justify why we should still leave that connection in place, to me. And if you could go through the traffic flows and why we, in your opinion, it's a good idea for the town to leave that entrance there.
You mean the second entrance in Oxford, basically?
Well, now that the entrance in Oxford to Route 20 is there...
Correct.
Why should we connect the two subdivisions, the Auburn subdivision to the Oxford and give them the access to Route 20 in Auburn?
Well, I think as far as the district, I had a chance to review Cullen Engineering traffic projections and obviously traffic assignment on how the traffic will utilize the various access points. It's always a good thing from a traffic engineer point of view to distribute that traffic amongst roads that could connect to your arterial system and not put a burden on one particular roadway. And I think that connection between the Ashworth Street and the Route 12 and 20 on the Oxford side indeed provides that additional relief on the Auburn. I strongly feel that, as we know, the majority of the development is on the Oxford side, and I think that particular connection provides that connectivity. Now, way back when we were looking at just the two access points, which were, one was in Auburn, the other one on Ashworth Hill, then yes, the bulk of that traffic, almost 70 percent, 80 percent of that traffic was using Ashworth Street to get onto Rocheville and then West Street. Whereas this alternative that we're looking at, I feel is, provides additional relief to the Albert Street, Blaker Street, and also at Ashworth Street on the Auburn side as far as traffic.
But what would, if we didn't allow the connection between the two subdivisions and they had the Route 20 connection in Oxford and the Ashworth, how much more traffic would be sent through Rocheville Street and West Street versus going out Route 20 to Oxford?
I believe, based on the projections, I don't have the numbers right now.
Lloyd, you're looking it up, I can tell you. They projected, according to Cullen, about 14 cars out of the 126 would go down to the Oxford Route 20 because there's no left turn capacity, and the traffic flow is trying to go east, so that there'd be a very limited number of the remainder of them.
So you're saying all would go Rocheville Street and West?
The morning, the morning peak hour goes in.
In the afternoon, you'd see the reverse.
The other way, right.
You know, you'd see some going for convenience, but you know, he felt that coming back, given the number of additional traffic lights that are projected along 20, they'll pop off as soon as possible because the traffic lights just slow them down and getting home.
Yeah, that's, the level of it is minimal.
Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I think...
Because this is really the first time you've been in front of us with the new entrance.
Right. But again, I did, I did look at the supplemental analysis that Lloyd had provided to us, which was the last traffic analysis he did based on the third connection. He looked at the distribution of that traffic amongst all three access driveways. And that was one of the concerns that I had was, you know, do we really need that connection when you have that third access? Because you're looking at, I believe, 26 residential homes on the Auburn side, basically.
27.
27.
Right, and the amount of traffic we're going to get is quite a bit more than...
Yeah, but I also feel that with the third access on the Oxford side onto Route 12 and 20, will disperse a lot of that traffic and get it to Route 12 and 20 quicker than getting them down through the Auburn. And I feel it has some merit to that as far as the connectivity.
And you would advise the board to keep the connection there?
I would advise the board to keep the connection, but again, with the stipulation that all those improvements are going to be in place as far as making sure that that traffic can enter safely into the development.
And Dave, through you, obviously the traffic signal is what, Albert is what's going to make this work. If we didn't have this connection, and the only connection we had was in Oxford on Route 20, then anybody who wished to head eastbound would have to head down to 56 in reverse direction somehow. And you're not able to reverse direction there easily. You may have to go all the way around to Route 12, which is why they're saying people would then go to Rocheville Street to West Street. If there was no signal going in at Albert, I think it would be a different situation.
No, I just, I guess I wanted to hear, again, just before we bring all this traffic through Auburn, that it's still the best scenario.
When you look at it, I agree with you 100 percent in that we've met numerous times to make sure that we have provisions so that at Albert Street, we don't have a safety issue there. That's why we have the islands going in and have it restricted to right in, right out only.
Until such time the traffic signal is installed.
Four years, I think was.
That's correct.
All right. And just to go through, Bahid, the one change you wanted to make was the construction of Tinker and Blakely intersection along with Albert?
Basically, the safety, that is correct. The safety improvements that we had recommended along Tinker Hill and Maple and Blaker, I would like that item C to be implemented in conjunction with the, as what they call the sixth building permit in Auburn.
Right, which now actually, you have item C, is it item four under this?
It's 4C.
It's 4C, I'm sorry.
4C, but what about 4A and 4B?
4A and 4B are okay. The 4C was really put under the issuance of the 11th building permit in Auburn, but I would recommend that that will be done in conjunction with, I would say with the first building. I think that the safety improvements should be regardless of how many building permits they get, and move it to item three, which is the, which is really once they build...
Am I reading the same? Because my 4C is stop sign for Tinker and Blakely.
Yeah, that's what he's talking about.
That is correct. He's talking about stop signs, stop lines.
I guess that...
And what about the rest of the construction of it? Are you concerned about the reconstruction of those two roads till?
Those two roads, I believe, can stay where they are, but I think they should, what they're saying on the item four is that the applicant will complete the construction of the improvements to Albert and Blaker Street prior to the issuance of the 11th building permit in Auburn. So I'm not really sure, I mean, if it's clear to the board that if the implementation is going to happen after the first building or second building...
No, the objective was, as was discussed, was that we had requested that they review and give us a opinion as to whether or not adding a select number of homes to the street would cause a burden to the existing infrastructure. We set at 10, based on the fact that we felt that was a comfortable number, could go with the existing conditions as they are. But by the 11th, that those conditions had to be improved upon, and those improvements would include the channelized island as well as the triangular island at the intersection of Albert and 20.
Which I'm okay with that. All I'm saying is the safety improvements, I believe, on those residential homes should be done.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think in my own mind, create another line. We should kind of create another line for clarification.
Well, I mean, the sixth, to change, to move that out, that's not a problem for me to move or separate and make actually a separate line out of it because...
Create another line.
That's fine. If we want to, I mean, all I'm saying is after the fourth building permit or fifth building permit, you may have some traffic. I want to make sure that the safety improvements are there for the residents in those streets.
I would like to point out that the actual work that has to be done does require granting permission from nobody in this room. You know, none of us here control the authority to add the stop sign, the speed sign, and the, so I don't know how you want to draft it, but I put, you know, subject to town approval. I don't know who in the town grants that approval.
Board of selection, I believe.
Okay. So, you know, obviously, we'd appreciate making sure that someone hops in that right away so it's already signed off on and we can just go and do it.
But just so I understand, from a mitigation point of view, just timetable-wise and everything, so once the appeal for this decision is done, you cut the town a check for the 125, the initial 125?
Yeah, if I can pick up an endorsed plan.
Yes, correct, correct. Yeah, yeah, good point. And then...
Just for clarification.
Yep. And then 12 months down the road, on that anniversary, we get a check for another 125 towards design. And then the 140 is prior to the sixth building permit. And then the Blaker Street is prior to the 11th, Albert and Blaker Street reconstruction is prior to the 11th.
And 4C would be prior to the sixth, you said?
Yeah.
Create another line that says 4C. Well, it won't be 4C, it'll be something else. But the stop signs, stop lines, et cetera. Right.
Subject to the town approval.
And then Ashworth improvements from Rocheville Street to the Oxford line would be within 12 months of the appeal process being over or whatever, the approval.
Just one, again, one point of clarification here. Again, we have submitted drawings, and, you know, Bill's got to give a blessing on those drawings, so I know what I'm building. And at the last meeting, one of the abutters mentioned the intersection specifically. You asked them to write a memorandum. I see that it appears you might have gotten that memorandum.
Yes, we did.
And, you know, from that perspective, we obviously want to make sure that we have a set of prints to draw from. Plus, the reason I said 12 was whether we're in the middle of winter. I'm not going to go tearing up your roads in the middle of winter.
Right, no, I understand that. So that's that, and then the, we'll install stop signs, we'll install stop signs at Rocheville and West Street with item five above.
Yeah, we may need to add that that is subject to town approval.
Oh, yeah, yep.
And then developer contribution, item three, survey, 2,400 feet.
The survey work actually has been conducted, Mr. DeLolos and everybody.
One other point on number 11.
Yeah.
I believe that town meeting needs to accept gift of land.
Oh.
Unless you just stop paying the taxes and they take it, but that's no fun for anybody.
I like that idea.
Yeah. I don't see why town meeting wouldn't accept it, but it's a formal procedure.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I'm assuming that if it ends up being the parcel land, do I need to get you to accept it before I create the right-of-way unit? When do you see the time on that? I mean, because obviously...
No, I think that after you create the right-of-way, because you own it, so you would essentially be granting, yeah, you'd be granting an easement and then...
I would think if they gifted the land to the town, one of the, typically gifts of land, I thought the board of selectmen accepted gifts of land.
You may be correct. There is somebody outside of this room that needs to accept it. I was under the impression...
Conservation does it all the time, right?
Right, and I thought I've seen selectmen meetings where they've accepted gifts of land, but I'm not sure how that works.
Wait, can I go pick up my, my gift?
Yeah.
On 12, there's one, one comment that I didn't put in here that I want to make sure we all understand. I thought that I put it in here, but if the light's installed, I'm assuming I can open up?
Yes.
Okay. At my discretion, once the light's up and functional.
The board would be in favor of that if Route 20 is built and the lights are up and running.
I thought I did.
Is that worded that way now?
Developer can connect upon installation of the proposed traffic signal at the intersection of Albert and 20.
All right, there you go. All right, want to make sure.
Just for clarification, Bahid, 4B, you want that tied to what, the 12 permit or the 11?
The 4B is the, is tied to the 11th building permit.
Oh, they said 12.
It says 12 in here.
Let's see.
Oh, I'm sorry, the... Oh, I'm sorry, the-
I would think they'd both be tied together.
Probably just a typo on my part, I think I probably hit the wrong button.
It should be 11, 11, that's correct, thank you.
All right. With that, I mean, I don't know if the board has really, I don't think we've really talked about triggers. These are, I think, suggested back and forth from the applicant to planner and the engineer. How does the board feel about these triggers?
Yeah, I mean, we've reviewed these before in the past, especially these contributions and stuff.
Yeah, no, the contributions, I think I'm all set with. I guess I'm more, the building, we've never really done it before, but-
No, not tied to what permits, yeah.
I'm just wondering, I mean, realistically, depending on conditions, you know, fast conditions or slow conditions.
You know, I can't project conditions, but I think our feeling was twofold. You know, one, the significant contributions being made up front, and two was the fact that we asked that the roadway be reviewed and determine what actually would be a trigger that would cause the need for those improvements to be necessary. And that's where we arrived at the 10, and so we tried to take the approach of, you know, when is it really necessary? I mean, you know, I obviously don't want to spend money unless I'm going to be utilizing the improvements that I'm doing, so I'd like to, you know, take what exists and utilize it for some period of time, and then make sure before I cause a problem that I corrected it.
Realistically, when do you expect, say, that sixth building permit, no, I'm into it.
You know, um-
I know it's hard, but-
Yeah, it's really hard. I mean, I guess, you know, what I would do is put out some feels this spring. If you ask me to project out into the future, I wish I had that kind of crystal ball, but there's a landlocked piece here, there's a gentleman who owns a landlocked piece, he has some interest, he's a local builder. You know, we might be able to help him, that would acquire some activity on the site. We would certainly explore the market conditions in the spring, which may be beneficial for approaching and seeing if we could do it. We'd certainly market it and see if there's any activity. But realistically, I would say it's probably 2010, mid-2010, where to approach that sixth permit.
But I think the other thing that isn't being said here, and isn't, you know, kind of a big issue behind the scenes, are Oxford building permits also, you know.
Well, we can't connect, what we focused on was the control in the town of Auburn, and the timeline was discussed back and forth, and, you know, we decided to go with a timeline because it made the most sense. You can't really condition it, but I can assure you that for the same reasons, you're not going to see six building permits for 18 months, is pretty much the same reason you're not going to see 185 anytime soon.
No, but by the same token, you know, the whole reason, or a big part of the reason Albert Street is being reconstructed is more the Oxford houses than the Auburn houses.
Yeah, but we're not connecting any of that traffic flow, or none of that traffic flow will be connected at all. You know, I think if you wanted that safety measure, then the additional language would be, you know, in addition, there'll be no connection allowed unless the traffic improvements are done to Albert and Blaker Street, which I don't have a problem with.
But then again, just thinking about it, and I'm just throwing it out for conversation, technically, you could have 184 houses and basically all the traffic going down Ashworth and Rochdale Street to West Street and-
Technically, yes.
Yeah.
Well, wouldn't all go down Ashworth and Roch, I would say probably 90%, 90%.
A good portion.
But there would be some flow, there would be some flow going to-
But not forever.
But that, that traffic-
No, I'm just, it's still have a signal passing. Conversation, I don't know really how I want to-
But that trigger for-
Think about it, but it's a possibility that we're going to see, before these other building permits are issued-
Yeah, but you're talking about-
Creates a whole different realm to this thing.
But the improvements for that flow of traffic are being done immediately. Those are not being done to a trigger to Auburn permits, those are being done on a timeline based on this approval. So when you talk about the flow coming off Ashworth Drive down Rochdale, turning right on to, I guess, Blaker, West, coming around, when it comes to that flow, obviously subject to the town approval on the three-way stop, those improvements are intended to be done in the next 12 months. So those improvements for that traffic flow will actually be done, that analysis was done, and it actually, in the analysis, was suggested that with those improvements, all flow could be handled on those existing corridors. Not that that's what you want, so we scaled it back to 185, which represents, give or take, a little more than half, you know, 60%.
I'm just wondering, do we speed up the process, and I'm wondering, Bahid's thoughts on this, do we speed up the connection process? Is it, is it a benefit to the town to bring that traffic down to Albert and Blaker Street without the light there, rather than going Rochdale Street and West Street?
I would probably say no, Mr. Chairman, and the reason for it is because I think with the improvements that the Mass Highway is doing at West Street and Route 12 and 20, at the traffic light, that gives them a lot of capacity there, that was one of my concern there. And Bill and I and Adam, we talked about that issue, and we found out that those improvements are going to be done by the time this development is going to happen. So I feel good about that location, the West and Rochdale Street, always stop control, I believe there is enough capacity to take the, up to 100, you know, 50% of the development. But if we don't do the improvements at Route 12 and 20 and Albert Street, I think it's going to be problematic for us to have that connection. So my recommendation is to use the Rochdale Street to West Street connection to Ashworth with that level of development, until such time the improvements are in place on Route 12 and 20. That would be my recommendation to the board.
Okay. All right. Is there any other questions for Bahid before we move into the next phase here?
Bahid, could you comment on Mr. Richard Eschols' letter, where he had a bunch of findings? I know you guys have considered it, but there are a few things that I, like, I haven't seen actually, you know, any of the templates that were put on the curves, has that been done? Just to be sure that-
That's Ashworth.
This is Ashworth.
Right.
Do you have another one of those? We haven't seen that letter.
Yeah, there's just a few items on it, there's, you know, but I want to be sure that at least we recognize them.
Trash trucks turning right on.
It was the comment from the last meeting.
Yeah, I apologize, I haven't seen this, this letter before, but I know we discussed the, the turning radii at Ashworth Street and Rochdale, I guess that was one of the concerns that Bill had, to make sure that the school buses can safely enter and exit that driveway. I did look at the, the plan, the recommended improvements, I made some recommendation to, to further widen the radii at that intersection, but I have not seen a final plan on that. So I don't know, Bill, you have received anything from the applicant?
Since you and I last met.
Right.
I don't think there's anything that I've seen further.
Because we did make a recommendation to, for the applicant to further engineer that, that-
Actually, Bill, that, I got a copy of what was sent in from-
From Lloyd?
From Lloyd, and that would be based on the last comments, and that was dated December 3rd, and I had tried to follow up a couple times, but I think I had written this up to simply suggest that those improvements would need your sign-off before they're constructed.
I do have the, in fact, I brought the turning templates with me tonight, was hoping to look at it before the meeting. My recollection was that the school buses do encroach on that-
Correct.
-posing movement, and we've gone back and forth on this to try to maximize that turning radii. So I would like to take a look at it one more time. I know they are limited to the right-of-way of what they have available, but over the next several days, I will look at that and contact Lloyd and see if there's any way we can approve upon it anymore. I think we're trying to balance impacts to abutting properties and also facilitate that turning movement. So I'll take one, one more look at it and see if we can make any additional modifications.
It would appear from the plan sent, Bill, that the R equals 17, it literally touches the edge of right-of-way. And it says, we went as far as we could, I don't know if you've-
Yeah, and I'm not saying that we can fix all the issues, I just want to be sure we're recognizing that there are some, and that we're looking at them.
Right, what I want to-
We're going to improve on this situation quite a bit, it just-
What I want to look at, and I know everybody can't see this, but on the easterly side, we do have more right-of-way area, so it may be possible that the compromise would be that this approach would become more of a skewed approach versus turning into a 90-degree, which would then allow more of a turning radius for the school bus. So that's what I want to look at, and see if that skewed alignment is more important or less important than the turning radiis, and looking at the lesser two.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think when you gave the instructions, and I'm not an engineer, Bill, but I thought you said R 50 on one side and R 20 or something on the other side, and we did the best we could, given the conditions of the right-of-way.
And you did put the radius on there, then when Bahid and I met, we felt that even tightening that radii up even more would allow us to have more pavement remain. So, again, I just wanted, it's been brought up as another concern by an abutter, so I'd like to take one more look at it and see if there's anything else we can do.
Yeah.
It's just tweaking, it's not major.
Yeah, that's why I put it subject to your sign-off and approval, so, you know, I left it that way.
All right.
You can hang on a second.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, and maybe, because I'm, myself, I guess, after talking with these people, and actually I have a few questions for Jeff Walsh regarding the subdivision also, but I guess I want to chew on it, and then next meeting, we can kind of ink out all the conditions and things, if that's agreeable with everybody. And in the meantime, before the next meeting, since it will go one more meeting, Bill, if you could go through Mr. Eschols' concerns, as far as the radius, the requested templates, the turning radiuses on West Street, and-
The last one was something I came up with after I practically rear-ended a trash truck because of the poor condition of that, that road down there, that hard scrabble road.
Yeah, yeah.
It's horrible down though, those trucks have to literally stop in the road and start to creep into that site because of those bad, bad potholes.
All right.
What's the hunting club?
What's that?
The hard scrabble road.
Hard scrabble road is not where BFI is, the rubbish companies are, down on West Street.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right. All right, with that said, thank you, Bahid.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate your coming and-
If I'm available, any questions, or any issues.
All right. Mr. Walsh, if you could come up, I don't know if we can slide in maybe next to Bahid there or-
You relinquishing that chair?
No.
Good evening, Jeff Walsh, I'm with Graves Engineering, Civil engineering consultant to the planning board on the onsite portion of Reserve Ashworth Hill.
You should look all tanned up, big guy, you look good.
Natural Massachusetts tan.
There you go, there you go.
All right.
Sun cleaning up the snowbank.
Yes, it is. Mr. Chairman, we can handle this either way, whether you'd like to ask me questions that you and the board have, or I could try to give you a brief summary of-
Why don't you do that first, and then we'll pick away at you.
Okay, very good. As of recent, in the last few months, we've reviewed two sets of plans for the reserve at Ashworth Hill. The first of those two review letters was issued November 7th of 2008. And what that was, is before that time, we had reviewed for the planning board and for the Conservation Commission back in 2005 and 2006. We were initially engaged by the Conservation Commission to review drainage for the portion of the project, discharge runoff to Auburn, and that was under a notice of intent filing. Subsequent to that, we were engaged by the planning board in 2006 to review the Auburn portion of the project for compliance with subdivision rules and regs. And then our activity-
Can you guys carry on the conversation outside so that we can get this in? Sorry about that.
Then I guess activity on the project, this was quiet for a while, and we were brought back on board in middle of 2008, late 2008, to do a review of these plans. And in doing so, what we did is we took our 2005 and our 2006 letters to the two different boards, tried to combine them. Apologize it was so long, it was 15 pages, we wanted to put everything in one document that you could read. Okay, that's what we did, and we issued that November 7th. Subsequent to that, we received another revised set of plans, and we reviewed those, and we issued a letter January 7th, 2009. That 2009 letter follows the format of our 2008 letter, which again, it's got everything in one document. The app can said, mostly the items have been addressed. There are a few issues we deferred to the board, there's a few issues yet to be addressed, and I'd like to start by maybe, let me start with the two issues we deferred to your consideration, it's not an answer we can make, and then let me go into the things that we still have issue with, and then things will be, I think, much more clearer. With respect to what we've deferred to the planning board, there's two issues. The first is with respect to slopes at detention basins, back in, I think, '05 or '06, we were of the opinion at that time, three-to-one slopes on both the exterior and the interior detention basins to comply with the EP stormwater management policy. Since that time, there's been discussion about the pros and cons of altering one of those slopes in order to get things to fit. The latest was to go with two-to-one interior basin slopes and three-to-one exterior basin slopes. That's what the plans before you show now, that is compliant with the subdivision rules and regs. Again, the two-to-one slope on the inside is steeper than what we had talked about back in '06. You know, again, we're of the opinion three-to-one inside and out. Stormwater policy is not clear, three-to-one in, three-to-one on the outside, or three-to-one both, we had taken the conservative approach back at that time. Two-to-one slopes is something you may often see on the side of roads and things like that. The other issue we deferred to the planning board for consideration is comment number 40, which is with respect to Lot 15. Lot 15 is the end, this lot right here, and this is the end of one of the roads, and this is the end of the project property right here. I can't see any better. The point being is this, right now, as proposed, this lot has enough frontage, property line starts here, comes around the perimeter of the cul-de-sac, and comes up here, has enough frontage to satisfy subdivision rules and regs, has an adequate land area. The point we're making is that if this cul-de-sac right-of-way, not the roadway, but the right-of-way were extinguished and tried to be made through a road if this were to be developed, there may have to be some land swapping over here to keep enough frontage along this road if this road were extended onto this other property. The other possibility, board, is to get rid of the turnaround portion of the roadway, but keep the right-of-way out like that, like a large bulge, if you will, in the road. I've seen a land swap when someone chose to develop at a later date, it was burdensome, I understand, on the developer's part, to straighten out the frontage issues, but again, we wanted you to be aware of it.
Can I just comment on that real quick, on behalf of Chris Keenan at Quinn Engineering, I spoke about that very comment. I think they've been trading emails, Jeff and Chris have been talking and trading emails, and the quick answer is, don't extinguish the cul-de-sac, it's done all the time. Roads can stay, the travelway stays, the width you want, but the cul-de-sac stays. And that would simplify things and I think resolve the issue as Jeff has recommended, so that's how you get through that fairly readily.
All right. That is one option, the other option is if the board was having a heartburn over what had happened if this were developed, and the fact of the matter is it had to be a land swap.
You need this parcel here.
No.
Just a little, little parcels here to-
You wouldn't have to land swap, you'd leave the cul-de-sac the way it is, done all the time.
It is, it is done quite a bit, yeah.
The cul-de-sac stays, if it goes through, goes through.
The right-of-way stays.
Correct, cul-de-sac, right-of-way stays, right. The roadway width would stay whatever was appropriate for the connection.
Okay. All right, so those are the two issues we deferred to the board that were significant to discuss.
Jeff, what, what's the most common practice for inside detention basins?
Jeff, what's the most common practice for inside detention basins?
Generally, we're seeing three to one.
Is it an issue to get three to one?
Yes. Yes.
Fire raise?
There was a request for an easement all the way around, ten-foot easement, and we can do one or the other, but not both. And it was discussed and updated to the board on November eighteenth. And so we spoke with Bill and the town and discussed this with Jeff, our engineer, and we kind of said we'd prefer to be able to get to the basin all the way around it. And we can live with the two to one on the interior as long as we, I believe it was, erosion control blankets and hydroseed was the determination on the interior to accommodate the long-term maintenance of that interior of the basin.
And it is part of the subdivision, it's loud in subdivision rules and regulations, and it's commonly done. It's not always done everywhere, but it's commonly done in many places.
It was, again, as a trade-off between an easement around, so they could get at the basin from all sides versus one side in, you know, and the interior's like.
Review our subdivision regulations and we'll decide for the next meeting.
With respect to Mr. McKee's comment of the easement, it was actually not an easement, but the basins had, if I recall correctly, had been graded out of three to one inside and out. But a full ten-foot wide access couldn't be provided around the entire perimeter of the basins, larger basins, with the three to one. It can be provided now with the basin of two to one on the inside.
And why couldn't it be provided with a three to one?
Not our property.
Where is this?
The basin.
There's.
It's on the entrance up over here.
Yep. There's two basins right here, there's one here and one down below it. And they're kind of constrained between property line, property line and the roadway here. And actually, the plans I have don't show a house here anymore.
Right. That's an old, old plan.
We did meet on this about a month or so ago, and I think the options were, where it's crammed into one area, the detention basin is already designed, and that location is a low, low-lying area, we're limited to property line. So if something has to give, it's either the, we need a retaining wall to gain some additional room, or we compromise one of the slopes for the ten-foot access road completely around the detention basin. So we felt it was important that we have the access all the way around for maintenance, and then a two to one slope with an erosion control blanket seemed to be a suitable solution. The other option would be if we kept the three to one on the inside and the outside, and we had a retaining wall just shy of the property line. I think, Jeff, that would also work, but, you know, it seemed when we had discussed this that the best solution, given the situation, was two to one with an erosion control blanket or some other suitable erosion control measures, which we talked about, riprapping and whatnot. But I think we felt that that would be more difficult to maintain.
Now, are these the only two basins in the whole project?
No, no, they're not. There are three.
There's a third basin. The other third is a three to one inside and out?
Yeah, they're much smaller. There's one of them, they're up on the private properties. One of these three, and I forget which one, was three to one, and I think two to one at the very bottom, but only for a change of elevation.
Can we build an access ramp to get into these basins for future cleaning or whatever?
Minus any, this ten foot is your access.
They're designed there, aren't they?
Is there an access there? There's access around the top.
Access around the top.
Trying to get down in, or is it a?
I think you'd be able to walk, certainly track equipment in and out of it. My recollection when we met is, boy, you know, there were a lot of different things to hash out, and at that time, there was not even the ten-foot access around most of the basin top. And my thought was, boy, you want to get access around that top, so at least to the point you're at the top of the slope to get into the basin. Can, to answer your question, can there be slopes down and in? We, yeah, we're going to get to that. Looks to me like it would be tough. The change in elevation, Mr. Chairman, in the upper basin is six foot between the top of the berm and the bottom of the berm. And for the other basin, the change in elevation is four foot.
So it's not a big.
Not too bad. My thought would be track equipment in and out.
Yep.
You're certainly not going to reach the middle of the basin from the perimeter.
Yeah, no, sounds reasonable. All right. Could we go over the crossing?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just so we're all on the same page, because it hasn't been addressed in a while. Now, we have twenty-eight feet of road going through with curb, and we brought the sidewalk in next to the road to go through.
That's right. There is a detail on it.
I was hoping you'd remember the heat's comment about twenty-four feet. You didn't remember it?
Well, here's the, the comment, one of the comments that Jeff gave us, number, for everybody paying attention, forty-nine. Excuse me, fifty. And I discussed this with Chris this afternoon. And what it comes down to is Jeff's concerned about the location of guard rail, the ability to build a guard rail. And there are a couple of ways to handle it. Number one is to narrow the opening and satisfy the question by having additional room provided for to build a guard rail, or design by a structural engineer the retaining wall and the guard rail, so it's done by a structural engineer, and that's provided. That's, you know, we show retaining walls on plans all the time to be provided by a structural engineer. I just want to bring everybody back to the original discussion about that crossing. On the other side of the crossing, the road's twenty-two feet in Oxford.
But the other thing that we're relinquishing here is snow storage also.
Correct, but there is adequate space to build this. I mean, if we're talking about a number of roads that twenty-four feet would provide, I mean, at this point, your comment mentions here, and because I haven't looked and discussed this with Chris Keenan, the comment mentions that twenty-six feet shown on sheet six, not twenty-eight. The rest of the subdivision was twenty-eight. I believe we narrowed it to twenty-six here.
I am a little confused on road widths. I thought they were thirty foot.
And we talked about going to twenty-eight. You're right, that's right. But we talked with the board off, without you present one day, about going to twenty-eight. And you mentioned that with a four-foot curb and a one-foot plus or minus curb width, and I would argue that you'd pick up a foot there, because it'd only be six inches on either side, or five inches perhaps, but you'd still have, with your, using your numbers, Jeff, two and a half feet to build the guard rail. But again, the only other way, the simple way, or the easy solution out of, the easy way out of the solution is to just have an engineered system that's provided, you know, later on. And I think that's the, that may satisfy the board. I can't be in a position, Mr. Chairman, going back to the Conservation Commission and asking them for a wider width just to fit the guard rail, when I can engineer that in place.
Right, well, we, I think, the board basically bent in their position to appease you in conservation, because we like our conservation commission in town. But that we were going to, I thought, do a twenty-eight foot road, and we bend on the grass strip to bring the sidewalk in.
Correct. We have a four-foot sidewalk with no grass strip on either side, but the four-foot sidewalk is there on one side. So my recollection, reading the note and talking to Chris, was it was a twenty-six wide, twenty-six foot wide roadway width, and then the sidewalk. Does it show right there? You got it all nice and marked up.
Twenty-eight foot.
Twenty-eight? Okay. You, that matches what the chairman's talking about.
Okay. That was my recollection as well.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, what it comes down to, as proposed right now, the face of the guard rail on one side of the road, there is no sidewalk. The face of the guard rail is essentially lined up with the face of the curbing, right at the edge of pavement. It should be set back. On the opposite side of the street, you've got the curbing and then the sidewalk right against it. The face of the guard rail on that side is lined up with, right along the back edge of the sidewalk. Should be set back a little bit. And then on the backside of that guard rail, there's about, the guard rails are set, the posts are actually proposed to be set in concrete instead of just driven. There's two inches between, theoretically, two inches between the back of the concrete encasement around the guard rail and the wall cap. It's proposed that there'll be a retaining wall, a masonry wall with the concrete cap. Point on the backside, the problem I'm having between the back of the guard rail and the wall cap is that these guard rail systems are semi-rigid systems. They do deflect with a crash. That's how they dissipate some of the energy from the vehicle. In doing so, with only two-inch separation from the wall cap, there'd probably be damage to the wall cap, and the guard rail may or may not fully keep the vehicle up at the top of the wall. My thought is that if you're going to use this type of guard rail system, there should be more separation from the concrete cap. But on the other hand, it's already encroaching too much on the sidewalk and the road. Possible scenarios?
What's ideal for that guard rail to be off the edge of road, in your opinion?
You're probably looking at about a foot and a half. I think it's twenty inches is mass highway typically, typically requires.
Well, Chris Keenan had mentioned to me that he'd built this or showed this per a mass highway spec. Now, I mentioned this to Jeff in the hallway prior to getting in here, and he hadn't found it. I just think we need to give Jeff and Chris some time to look this over and come up with another alternative.
Well, I've been through the mass highway specs on this. The guard rail set in the concrete is, in fact, absolutely a mass highway spec, no doubt about it.
Bolted to the wall.
No, not bolted to the wall. It's set in concrete, and that's for cases where there's, they can't get the depth of the rail, I mean, the guard itself, I mean, the post itself.
Yeah, I've seen that, yeah.
My point is this, it's just, you've got to have the separation from the road and from the sidewalk, and you've got to have room on the backside of the guard rail so that it can deflect. And for lack of anything better, what I found in mass highway is they recommend three feet from the face of the guard rail to the, if the guard rail were here, they recommend three feet and then a slope going down, three feet from the face of the guard rail to where there's a change in grade. I interpret that as give some room for the crash to occur. Using that as a rule of thumb, I'm seeing that, you know, you're probably looking and trying to separate the guard rail from the wall by about three more feet. That all said, there are other guard rail systems. For example, a bridge. You have the parapet of the rails of a bridge, which are actually rigid and can withstand the impact of a vehicle, in which case, if the retaining wall were designed in such a way that don't bolt the guard rails we used to see on top, because it's made to deflect, and that's going to cause structural damage to the wall as far, and also may or may not keep the vehicle on top of the wall when it deflects. There may be an alternative guard rail system, such as a rigid system, similar to bridge parapets and things like that, where there's an approach guard rail, a tailing guard rail, and in the middle, it's the bridge itself that works as the guard rail. That might be a solution.
I think to the chair, maybe, and as you mentioned, Jeff, pouring, similar to like a Jersey barrier type of thing along the edge, is that what you're referring to, Jeff?
Well, it would, more than something just sitting there, it's going to be.
I guess my other concern is just where there is no snow storage, the plows have to carry the snow past this crossing. And I just think there's a real risk in the plows or loaders or whatever pushing this guard rail back in the snowstorm also.
Right. And also concerned about if it is ever hit, the future maintenance and repairs to that guard rail system and the wall. Maybe what they could look at is if it's a poured concrete wall or a concrete structure, and they could form a Jersey barrier type of system along that edge.
Both sides.
Right. And maybe in the end, you know, if it's a complicated guard rail system on a retaining wall, just pouring it may be less expensive to.
Turn the chair, I'm not an engineer, so I just heard words like deflection, and it sounds like, you know, vehicles running into this. What rate of speed does it require for this thing to move? Because this is a residential area, this is a.
No, you probably, there's a good chance you're going to have a town loader with a plow attached or something going right by. And, you know, I see up on the turnpike, I mean, they push against their guard rails all day long and move the guard rails around. You know, and certainly, I'm sure, as much as, depending on storms and visibility and everything else, our town plows, I'm sure they bumped into guard rail here and there. You know what I mean? And that's, I guess, part of my concern.
Yeah, for the distance, I guess I was asking the question more, given the distance and the location, you know, how much, I mean, this is not a highway where, you know, they're traveling at high rates of speed, there tends to be a little more TLC going on in the work, I would hope, in a residential area than in a large, wide highway area.
You know, where you have subcontractors, you don't necessarily have town employees, you have all kinds of different varying types of plow operators, that's all. Where it's right at the road's edge, I would say there's a pretty good chance of.
Well, I thought I understood it to be it's behind the sidewalk on one side and at the road edge, on the curb edge, on the other side. So which one is the concern? You have plenty of space from the one where you have a sidewalk space. So you're talking about the one.
I would be more concerned about the road edge myself, but I guess Jeff's point is, if someone does hit the guard rail, vehicle-wise on the other side, it's right next to the wall, and it could affect the wall.
It certainly could, on either side, Mr. Chairman. That's two inches on either side. It's, everything's very tight.
Mr. Chair, Jeff, how high is the retaining wall? Just off here.
I thought it was around fifteen feet.
Yes, I was thinking sixteen feet. So these are significantly high walls. So just listening to this conversation, I'd be inclined to suggest that they pour a concrete Jersey barrier, form a Jersey barrier.
Or come up with some kind of barrier integral to the wall, to the retaining wall.
Right. Exactly. It could all be formed together, similar to what you, I know this isn't a highway, but it's a similar type of construction.
What kind of walls are being proposed?
These are the mass highway, stone walls.
Right, they maybe ought to get something like a castle block type wall, and then have a design to it, would be like a Jersey barrier type of system on top of that, but it'd have to be engineered in integral part.
I think it would be worked out, Mr. Chairman. The devil's in the details, and I'm just concerned about what I see on paper, and if I were to see it built in the field, whether it would serve the purpose. And the guard rail really should be set back a little bit from the sidewalk as well. It shouldn't be right on the edge for the pedestrians.
We're thinking about the blind ones. They could hold it.
To answer Mr. McKee's question about speeds, the information I could find in the mass highway design manual, when they talk of guard rails and crashes and deflections and such, it's a full-size passenger vehicle traveling at thirty miles an hour with a twenty or twenty-five degree angle crash, something like that. Point being, it's thirty mile an hour design speed, which is typical of a residential subdivision.
My next suggestion was going to be post a speed sign and put a speed bump on it. Then you'd be telling me that you're going to wreck your plows. But there's subcontractors who wreck your guard rails, I think it's an even trade.
It's a tough one, you know, just thinking out loud, options are widen the wetland crossing, which I understand for reasons why they wouldn't want to go, narrow the paved roadway width a little bit, might be part of the solution and not entirely the whole solution. And alternative guard or barrier systems, and those are the options I see.
True, those are basically the three options.
And I believe this is the, in my discussion with Mr. Pesci, in my exchange of emails with Chris Keenan, this seems to be the more concerning issue left on the table at this time, as I know it.
That's what Chris had confirmed, that's really the only major issue, the rest of them can be dealt with.
Because I guess, again, I, snow storage just seems to be an issue. I know, you know, even, I know we've had town employees here for the next subdivision for the bridge at West Street there and Rochdale Street, and snow's carrying through, and this is kind of the same type of scenario where, you know, even if we narrowed the road, I'd really like to leave room for snow storage if we narrowed the road and not necessarily use it for guard rail. You know what I'm saying? I guess you could use it for both, but.
So you're saying, narrow the road, travelway, but leave the wetland crossing width the same width?
Well, if we, it's, what is it, twenty-two feet in Oxford?
Twenty-two feet in Oxford.
No. The proposal from the heat is twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four for Road A, but not for this one.
I think.
Am I wrong about that, for heat?
It's, this is, would be a major, this would be a major, uh, roadway, like the collector roadway, it's the same as Road A, just going up this way. And you'd have recommended twenty-four feet for that.
My recommendation was twenty-four feet.
So if we went twenty-four feet, if the board was agreeable to twenty-four feet for the length of the crossing-
Right.
How could we better use that four feet for snow storage and for regard-
Guardrail position?
And what is the width of the sidewalk?
Cause I, I would really rather push the sidewalk away from the edge of road and utilize that for snow storage because you're gonna be putting snow right in that sidewalk, so you're gonna eliminate the use of the sidewalk.
So let us come up with another detail and we'll, we'll show it to you.
For just the length of that crossing, but-
Just, just so you hear-
Snow storage is important to me, um-
The narrowing of the, of the crossing, narrowing of the road slows people down. When you go from wide to narrow, it slows everybody down, so it helps in the whole effort, but, um, if what you're talking about is moving a couple of feet off the sidewalk, a couple of feet off the edge of pavement-
On each side.
On each side, then you have room to do what we're talking about on both sides. Better room to do what we're talking about on both sides.
Jeff, would you agree with that?
Narrowing to twenty-four feet?
Yeah.
Absolutely. I, I think especially where this is at the town line, and if the road on the Oxford side is gonna be twenty-four feet inwards, we're not bringing the transition ad to just before the, this crossing here.
Is the, the twenty-eight, we, you know, it's, it's been, uh, for bigger subdivisions, the boards required in the past for vehicles parking in the gutter and it's really worked out well-
Agreed.
-in the bigger subdivisions that we've done it in. And I, I'd really like to keep it, in fact, we went from thirty to twenty-eight for a lot of different reasons, but, you know, if we limit it where it is right at the town line-
And no parking.
You know. Yeah, I mean, I would think it should work. Vehid, you're-
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Chairman. I think, I think that extra, uh, width will give the adequate room for the storage and I do agree with Jeff, I think the guardrail should be set back further than, than two inches, four, four and a half is, is adequate.
But there would still need to be an alternate design because even with the addition of two feet on each side, you're not, you're not meeting some of the-
The design.
Well, it looks like I could go, um, on one side, um, you know, we might choose with that extra quote, four feet, to, you know, use a foot and a half on one side, two and a half on the other side, just to move the sidewalk back, give a, another foot back on the sidewalk type of things, you know, some kind of concept, I just need to come up with. It's not that we'll come up with alternative.
I guess that, my point is, the concern is still the guardrail against the block wall and the concrete top. If, if Jeff's saying that, and, and correct me if I'm, I'm misstating what you say, but that there should be a three-foot or so separation between the rear of the guardrail and the wall, even with that additional two feet on each side, you may have trouble meeting that and there may be implications for, excuse me, the integrity of the wall should there be a crash.
I, I thought I heard eighteen inches ear- earlier.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, we, when we met about a month ago, I asked Chris Keenan to review federal highway crash testing standards. I'm sure they have samples or situations they've studied where you have retaining walls and guardrail situations and just come back with what information he has on that. So I think that would be helpful to know what he, what he came up with.
I know we've done bolted down guardrails to the tops of walls-
Right.
-wood caps and things, uh-
Right.
-in a lot of cases.
Absolutely, you, you can do that, but if he can position it far enough away from the wall to allow for the deflection, then that would be preferred, just so we don't have the maintenance headache in the future.
Right, yeah.
But I know Chris was, I believe was gonna look into that.
Yeah.
Cause we could beat this to death probably, but maybe-
Yeah, that's fine. All right, well, you guys, uh, can you come up with a proposed plan?
With a twenty-four foot one.
And we'll look at it at the next meeting.
Yeah, pavement twenty-four feet.
Yes.
Would you like for them to-
And I'd really like to try to keep, I don't know how other board members feel about the grass strip, I, I'd like to try to create a, like a two-foot grass strip between the sidewalk, just to put storage. You're gonna have snow come off of that gutter line and it's gonna go into the sidewalk. If you have a foot, it's going into the sidewalk. If we're giving up four feet, it'd be nice to utilize two feet to keep snow out of that sidewalk. I don't know, how, you know? No?
Yeah, most of the towns, well, most of the town sidewalks are right up against the road and they go along with the blower and clean them off.
Mm.
It'd be nice if you had the room.
The, the other option, Mr. Chairman, would be to increase the size of the sidewalk and provide for storage on the sidewalk as opposed to two feet of grass that may or may not be maintained-
And survive.
-in the future. And both are, are an option.
All right, um, other, I'm sorry, we stopped you in midstream there, Jeff, if you wanna continue.
That's, that was time well spent. Cross that off the list. No, that was, that was a big one, honestly, no.
Agreed.
Yeah, and I wanted you to understand, again, the two concerns or setbacks-
Mm-hmm.
...as well as having room for it to move and finally bolting it down. That type of guardrail system, I don't think should be bolted to a, to a wall. All right, moving on, um, more minor issues, but there was, um, uh, water quality swale this, um, having trouble with this plan, this looks like an old-
It is.
No, it's just that the, the road layout is, is, um, that's a different road layout. Let me, uh, get the beginning of the sheet here. Oh, okay, just to call this out.
Correct, yeah. That was a concept that we, that was one of the options we presented a long time ago.
Behind these, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, behind these lots here is what's called a water quality swale. Um, the last round of revisions, um, there, there's a drainage pipe, I think, reducing elevation over here that puts it lower than the bottom of the water quality swale, that's gonna come up. And I understand they're gonna be taking care of that, I have yet to see plans. Um, the acts, there is access around the back of these dwellings to, to get to the water quality swale, it's a long swale about ye big in this area here. And just so you're aware, I don't see a, a major problem with it, it's more of an inconvenience, but the access behind this dwelling here will be almost at the closest point about nine or ten feet away. The ten-foot wide access around the basin, it's gonna be that close to the dwelling itself. It can be handled with easements and such, but, um, backyards usually see swing sets and sheds and other things, so, again, um, you know-
What would you suggest?
Well, just, it's just, they've gotta be real clear that, um, an easement should be created and it's, it's a matter of keeping that easement clear. But, uh, the, um, access being that close, I don't have a problem with it, I just wanted you to be aware of it.
Is there a different way to access it, or is there, can we move the water quality swale so the access is moved with it, or?
Could we go to that plan, Jeff, maybe?
Sure.
I don't know anything about this issue, it looks like you come up from the other side. It's a swale on a detention basin, just to clarify.
It's called a swale, it acts more like a basin, it's, it's the man of stormwater runoff. Uh, sheet number five of the Quinn engineering plans. And on sheet five at the top, um, this is, I think, yeah, Road C comes around here, the access is gained to the, this is, this part here-
Is this a swale or a pond?
It's called a swale, in my opinion, it's functioning as a pond, detention pond, detention basin, whatever you want to call it. Just because it's long and narrow doesn't necessarily make it a swale.
Okay.
In my opinion, a swale conveys flow instead of impounding it. But anyways, um, point being, it is, I looked at as a stormwater management facility. Uh, in part, it does, um, produce the peak rate of runoff, um, it also adds, um-
We have a fence around it, we have a-
Yep.
-ten-foot, uh, access point around it.
Yep, there's a fence around it, ten-foot access is the shaded area that you'll see between the house and, and the, and the water quality swale. Um, you see the shaded area on lot twenty-four, it's just, it's very close.
Yeah.
I mean, to the point where, again, these are large footprints for the buildings and I got a feeling the buildings may not take up this entire footprint, but somewhere in that general area will be the dwelling. And, um, just be aware, it's, it's, it's close to the dwelling.
What was the issue with the piping there, Jeff? You mentioned something about the swale elevation, daylight pipes, is that a different site?
No, this, this was here as well, there was the drainage system that discharges to it, there was a problem with either, um, cover over the pipe or the, um, the invert elevations and not having enough room for the castings, um-
I think it was that we assumed groundwater of one foot and there was an issue about two foot of coverage from the November meeting.
Yeah, I think that's, that note.
And we said, we, that's actually one of the conditions, the last condition that we spoke about tonight when Vehid read them, was to verify that in the field.
Was that soil testing in basin number twelve?
That was the, what you classified as an overflow slow swale back in November. And I had put that in the condition. The condition was that the developer has no overflow slow, which assumes groundwater depth of one foot with an additional foot of coverage added. Such overflow swale must have the actual groundwater confirmed prior to construction and ensure adequate coverage as required under town rules and regulations.
I don't know if it applied to this, it certainly applied to one of the smaller stormwater facilities. I thought it was not up on this end of the project, but over here, there was one that might've been added after you went through your testing program. And the, the assumptions made on that particular one were reasonable, but you just had to be confirmed. I don't know if it applied here, but, um, so, again, sometimes homeowners, they move in, they're happy, they do whatever they're gonna do in their backyards and then a year later, somebody comes through trudging across their backyard to go maintain the pond and, "Hey, what's going on in my backyard?"
It's a fence.
Again.
But there's a fence there.
Okay, fair enough, the fence is up, it's gonna be very clear. That's, okay, just, again, I wanted the board to be aware of it.
No, 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 I appreciate it.
Okay. On the same basin, different issue, um, but there is some grading, there's a property line right here. This is not part of the project, this is one of, one of the parcels interior that, that is owned by others. And I didn't pick up on it earlier, but there is some grading associated with the swale that goes outside the limits of the project and onto this other's property. That's one of the other comments I had here.
It's a good point. Is there any rebuttal to that, or?
Why there's grading on somebody's property?
Does it interior-
Having a domain, does that work?
No.
There's an interior parcel that Mr. McKee has a part interest in, I don't know if that, if that's the one. It's a rectangular parcel stuck in the middle of nowhere.
I don't have an interest, that property was sold at auction. I, I had acquired an interest and it was sold at auction, but, uh, that could be, is that the MTA?
Massachusetts, uh-
I'm not sure who owns that.
But, uh, to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, there's no explanation for going on someone's property.
Yeah, it's sitting in the middle of nowhere.
So you're gonna take a look at that?
I was thinking about this parcel, not that one.
I, I didn't pick up on that earlier, they hadn't made any revisions that before didn't encroach them and did it just-
I think way back when, there was an assumption made that we might acquire those properties, those are not, I think, we'll, we'll retract that later and correct that.
Moving on, um, easements for the, um, for the stormwater management facilities are not shown on the Jarvis survey plans yet, so I'm not sure how that was intended to be handled, I assume by-
They'll be added.
Could you add them to this plan so we have them? The subdivision plan?
The Jarvis plans will become part of that, yes.
Okay. It'd be helpful to, once Jarvis has generated the, the easement lines, if they could be dropped onto the Quinn plans so that we can see that the, the limits of this stormwater facility-
Before we vote on this, it'd be nice to have everything on this plan, right?
Thank you. I'm punchy right now, I'm exhausted, I gotta leave at five in the morning.
Lots one and two, um, I was a little confused as to what was going on between the Quinn plans and the Jarvis plans. They showed slightly different frontage lines along Road A and I couldn't tell if they had been combined. One of the plan sets, I interpreted the two lots-
One and oh.
Oh, just off of, um-
Two was right behind the detention basin.
One and two are just off of Laker Street. On the Quinn plans, they're on sheet six. And, um, on the Jarvis plans, they are sheet sixteen. The Jarvis plans, I think, might've had an old layout where there's a, a straight jog here on the front edge, whereas the Quinn plans have a taper, that, that front edge is, it's a smooth transition along the boulevard entrance to where it becomes a non-boulevard entrance.
Can I, may I read the written response, uh, Mr. Keenan made? My plan and Jarvis plan differ in that I had previously combined Lot One and Two in my plan, so Lot One didn't stand alone as a lot with only stormwater facilities on it. Jarvis never changed this, I have no preference, but we're gonna go back to the two lots and show this two lots and make them both the same. Basically make them both the same.
Now, where is Lot One? I, I haven't yet, I see Lot Two here.
On sheet sixteen-
Is Lot One where the detention basins are? Or is it across the street?
I believe Lot One is the detention basin, there was a separate standalone lot created-
I don't see it delineated.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, no, I'm, I'm not, I'm not correct. I believe it was created as part of the first residential lot. That's what Chris explained to me today. I wish he was here.
Which is Lot Two.
Right. So where's Lot Two shown, that long, long lot?
Lot Two's a long lot, yeah.
Where is Lot One? Is there a Lot One?
On, on the Quinn, on the Jarvis plans, the survey's plans, this is Lot One.
Lot One is where the subdivision, uh, the detention basin's at.
That's right.
I can only tell you that what Chris told me was way back when the prior management team thought that they wanted a separate Lot Four, the detention basin, and, um, or had originally drawn it that way, so Jarvis showed it that way. Later on, it got combined, Lot One and To, Two got combined, is the way he described it to me. So they need to be corrected on the plan. I, I don't know what that does to the numbering scheme, but nothing, is it, can you see anything that says Lot One or Lot Two here?
Oh, no, this says Lot Two.
Right, I see it.
And the land area that is basically the sum of Jarvis's Lot One and Lot Two.
Okay.
So the, I interpret the Quinn plans show Lot Two as what was formerly Lot One and Lot Two.
Correct, that's what he told me, that he didn't catch the, the, the fact that Jarvis hadn't combined them. Where's Lot One then?
It doesn't exist.
Doesn't exist anymore.
Okay.
According to these plans.
Okay.
So this represents one lot, a house and a detention basin?
That's right.
Okay.
So instead of twenty-seven lots, we're talking twenty-six lots?
I, I don't know if that's true or not, now that you've said it, but-
I, I'm under no, no knowledge that there was a reduction in home lots or house lots, if you want to call it.
Yeah, I think the number of homes are still there, the lot numbers may be different because we're up to over seventeen or something, um, excuse me, up to twenty-something.
I think what, what he's asking, if you took a lot away, did you take away a lot? I think the lot was created for the detention basin separately.
That's right, originally.
So you had twenty-eight.
So it was labeled as twenty-eight.
Oh, one was a detention basin lot.
Just start calling it Lot Two?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
It goes to twenty-seven.
It goes to twenty-seven.
But this is still showing two.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Yep, so maybe it is twenty-six, uh, rather than twenty-seven.
Yes.
Yeah, just lost a house.
Twenty-six buildable.
Okay.
All right. So with that, Jeff, any other comments?
Twenty-eight to thirty-foot road width, it is now twenty-eight foot.
Depending on waiver.
Depending on the waiver, okay. Grading outside parts. One last thing, we talked about the water quality swell and the pipe elevation being adjusted. Likewise, we're the different detention basin for these, and this is at the area of the two larger detention basins. We talked of earlier about sloping. Long story short, they made planned revisions to the drainage system. Not comfortable with the revisions made, and there is an area, basically this, the outfall for these two pipes here, I think, I think it's these two, forget if it's these two or this one.
Is that the six again?
Ah, yes, it's six. It is the bottom basin, because it's downstream of DMH 104. Long story short, Mr. Chairman, this, the outfall here is pretty low, and I think, I forget if they were cover of pipe manhole issues, but they can very easily move this manhole up the hill a little bit and be able to raise the invert of DMH 104, which is right here. And likewise, they could raise the invert of the discharge into the sediment four bay, get the pipe off the bottom of the sediment four bay so the water can spill out. And as, as the sediment accumulates, there's room for the water to keep flowing.
Jeff, that was DMH, what'd you say, 104?
104, yep. And that, I, it's clear to me that can be fixed. They're not as elevationally challenged as they are with the water quality swell up the hill.
Water quality swell, okay.
That's, that's what, that's part of the DEP stormwater nomenclature, and in my opinion, that's something that, again, goes, conveys flow, it has a little check panel. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay.
The other issues were minor.
One other quick question. This parcel that's in the middle of the subdivision, Tony's parcel, right here, where Road C and Road D come together, and actually, I guess it's the same scenario where Road C and Road B come together. What is the status of this land outside that box? Where, what lot is that going with? Or is it going with the roadway?
I'll have to answer that question when I talk to Chris. I do not know.
All right. I mean, we obviously don't want to leave dead parcels here.
Understood.
If that's the case, I'd just soon see it attached to the right of way for the boxes.
I'll have to ask him what the thought process was there. I've talked and I've spoken, the one where it crosses the town line, Mr. Chairman?
No, I'm looking where Road C and Road D come together.
Yeah, no, this is, I just want to tell you who the parcel owners are. This is, this square by C and D.
Yeah.
This is owned by Mass Turnpike Authority. We've approached them. We weren't able to reach an accord. I can certainly give it another college try, but, you know, they're a big machine, so you don't really get anywhere. And we'll figure out what we intend to do with these parcels at the next meeting. This parcel, we were approached by the landholder. This is the one where I acquired an interest in a parcel through one-eighth share, which was ultimately sold in auction to a local builder developer named Tony something.
Something or other.
And he's approached us that he would like to gain access to the property. So ultimately, I guess, to answer your question over here, these may end up as some under agreement where he can gain access and frontage to the roadway for the parcel that he controls.
Okay, well, we'd like to know what's gonna happen with that land.
Yes, I'll speak to him and follow up and try and convey some.
Is there any other?
There is.
Challenge parcels around the.
There is, Mr. Chairman, this triangular piece right here.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I don't, I.
Is that your piece, or is that someone else's?
I thought this was part of the project.
It is.
And it's called, oh, it's a parcel of land, not as a building lot.
So can we attach that to lot 23, or?
Yeah, we'll clean up, we'll clean up the lot lines and we'll, we'll get rid of the floaters.
Now, will you have the two plans combined and all these changes done for the next meeting?
You know, without Chris here, could I give Adam a call tomorrow?
This is, this is designated not a building lot? That's not acceptable? Not part of the subdivision, not a building lot?
Well, we don't want to leave, we don't want to leave parcels that are.
I don't want to do any tax on them either, so I'd rather.
We don't want you to. We want them attached to something.
Yeah.
Or attached to the roadway, to the right of way, so the town ends up with it.
No issue with that. I'm wondering if in the initial design, that the, that the belief system existed that you were gonna acquire that square piece next to it, and somehow with that and the triangle, it ended up being a certain amount of landmass for subdivision. I will clean them up and take them off and move them to other parcels and get your answers to your questions, and I'll get to Tony and work that situation out. So if Tony were to request the frontage and we were able to reach agreement, would, would you prefer I do nothing and other than to say that we're gonna convey that over to him for him to subdivide later when a road comes in? Or would you prefer that I potentially draft out a concept that would show additional lots with his permission to add his land to our development?
I mean, how does the board feel? I would think you'd want to see what's gonna be.
Sure.
Yeah, like, and even this piece, to even attach it to another lot, I would think the town would be better off taking it as part of the right of way or something, because you're gonna be outside the irregularity.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The lot irregularity and everything else.
You're talking over here on.
Yeah, C and D.
Yeah, I'm talking.
And the other one, yeah, I guess I'd like to see, you know, what's gonna happen with that piece, if we're gonna approve this plan.
Might as well approve it now. If he's got a willingness to move forward, I'll just call him and tell him that you do, and you'd rather see it on the plan now, and we can draft it in and have it done.
Or attach it all to lot 27 and call it a day.
Absolutely, understood.
All right.
Understood.
Does that sound reasonable? All right.
Can I get a refresher on my list, just to make sure that we got it right?
Sure.
You wanted to see easement plans. We did not.
Jeff, do you want, can you email him a copy of all your notes and?
He's got a copy of the review letter, and everything I've talked about tonight is a comment within the review letter.
Okay.
I just want to confirm, the one thing that was brought up, not addressed, Mr. Chairman, was the, the information about the basin, which if there's no decision tonight, obviously can't have a chain if you chose to say, I'd prefer not to have ten feet but a three-to-one slope, so we're sort of.
I mean, how does the board feel? It sounds like Jeff is recommending and Town Engineering is recommending a ten feet and possibly a two-to-one slope, a waiver on this because of existing property lines or?
I don't think it's gonna be a waiver, because it's within the subdivision control laws right now.
Well, I think that's a question.
I guess what I'm trying to point out.
I know we've had this with the previous owners.
I, in, in generating this review letter and these comments, I did, the heartburn I'm having is it satisfies subdivision rules and regs. They're very clear, two-to-one on the inside, three-to-one on the outside. It doesn't clearly go against, but doesn't clearly comply with stormwater management policy and three-to-one slopes. Three-to-one a preferred, three-to-one more often than not, we see in many of the subdivisions we look at, at least on the inside of the basin. However, when you, access is important too. And if the board's willing to listen to the whole story, is that you got a road layout that is pretty much fixed, not just because it's been engineered, but because of other physical features on the site.
Right.
And within the, and believe it or not, even though it's quite a bit of hill, they're elevationally challenged around here, because we kind of kicked around, what about putting stormwater somewhere else, and then we're, for, for reasons, it just didn't seem feasible to go away from the lot one with two basins there. So things are pretty limited, and it's a matter of, you know, can you live with two-to-one on the outside? Certainly will, will grow grass and, and with grass properly vegetated, it will be stable. It'll be fenced, so the last thing is, you know, is the board willing to live with it. It certainly complies with subdivision rules and regs, and it just, it doesn't clearly comply with DP stormwater management policy. That's what it comes down to, Mr. Chairman.
And the options, Jeff, would be leaving a ten-foot access road around it, either a two-to-one on the outside with the fabric, or a retaining wall on the outside at the toe of slope and maintain three-to-one on both sides? Are there any other options, or is that pretty much?
I think you've got it.
So those, those are your options. Access, Jeff, going into it?
Into the bottom of the access?
Yeah, is there an access road into this one, or can it reaches it elongated? That's the only, as I'm sitting here, was, well, not the three-to-one would be better on the inside, and the two-to-one with the fabric just for access purposes.
Well, he sounded like his opinion of, they're only four feet and six feet deep.
These are shallow.
You could just walk it down.
Right, and I, we did go through this, and when we talked about it last time, we went with the two-to-one on the inside for maintenance purposes.
No, that sounds fine to me, I don't know.
They're shallow.
Yeah, it's not unreasonable, it's just, it's not ideal, but it's not unreasonable. All right.
So if, and if that's okay, then there'll be no change made to that portion of the draw?
Yeah.
Easements, the grading in private property will have to be corrected, the cleaning up the loose peripheral lots that aren't attached to anything, and the drainage manhole that you had mentioned, which you've made a note on.
Yep, DMH 104 to be moved to raise the inlet to that detention basin at lots one and two.
And then, of course, the crossing, which is the big one. And then merge all this together in a single comprehensive plan for the next.
Merge that and then determine what you're doing with the stray parcels.
That's what I mean.
Clean up all the lot ones.
Yeah, and then.
So the Jarvis plan and the.
They'll be all merged together.
Whatever and everything, yeah.
So all the lines are consistent. If you just afford me the opportunity to call Adam tomorrow to confirm whether or not we can hit them next meeting.
Well, this is a public hearing, though, we have to continue to a day and day then.
Well, we continue, next meeting, if they get a continuance, you can.
There's an issue, we can, the only other thing that, that we haven't touched on, and you all have a copy of Chris Keenan's email to me, which Bob is privy to. Apparently Jarvis Survey missed putting the information on the plan on the Massachusetts coordinate system, which is a requirement of the rules and regs, and obviously to do it now would be difficult at best. And Chris was inquiring as to whether or not the board would waive that. My suggestion to him was that the board would condition that Jarvis did this in the spring when they went out prior to any release of lots. The idea being that this is used in the town to do all of the accessories parcels for taxation purposes, and it's something that's required, so obviously Jarvis should do it as part of the subdivision, but it's not critical to the approval, but if we condition any releases on it, I think that that's appropriate. I, I put that to the board. Obviously, it's, it's up to the five of you, but that would be my suggestion.
I think we could condition that.
Better to get that out now than, than we were deciding the fate.
Thank you, Adam. We, we talked about that with Chris today.
All right.
The next meeting would be when, Mr. Chairman?
Twenty-seventh.
I mean, we could get, I'll just guesstimate and say that since we don't have a lot of issues left, we could get the civil engineering plans done. There's really not a lot to do anyway to the Jarvis plans, but I would guess that we could certainly get them to you in ten days, you know, week, ten days. My concern would be that we'd have to do all this review over and so on, and I was hoping that with the input that we've done tonight, that barring the wetland crossing discussion that we have to have, that we wouldn't have to, you know, do a full comprehensive re-review with Jeff and, and do that, because that would take longer.
No, I guess if, if, well, I guess the only, at that point, if all of Jeff's concerns are taken care of, and Behit's concerns, now, we have final plans on Albert Street and the improvements there?
We, we do have conceptual plans for.
Do we have final design plans?
No, we do, because one of the concerns was making sure it fit in the right of way at Albert Street and 20, so that triangular intersection, but the, the small changes that are required at the intersection of Ashworth and Rochdale are conceptual at this point, and I don't think anything changed at the channelized intersection of Blaker and Albert, because that was already previously designed, and there weren't any changes made to that.
I don't think those issues would hold up.
So I guess, I mean, can we finalize these drawings and put it to bed?
We still need the template, though, at.
I think, yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think as part of the condition, I think we can say that, I mean, I would like to see a concept that, that shows how the Albert and Blaker, Blake Street looks like, and then the condition be written that the final design plan will be in conformity to the conception of design plan as reviewed and approved by the board. So something that, at least we have as part of the condition that it shows what the intersection would look like.
Could you, could you have that plan already, the concept plan already?
Right, I just, I'd love to, the quicker we get it tied down and.
Well, can I turn and ask the audience?
What's that?
Lloyd's happened to be in the audience, I could maybe ask him how quickly, once we get concept approval, we can convert it to a final plan. Lloyd.
How soon we could do that?
Yeah.
Are you saying by the 27th?
Yeah.
I don't know about that. We need to, I need to meet with Bill to go over it, and I don't know, but we need that by the 20th for the final plans.
Well, we was fortunate he was here.
Well, then, if that's the case, why don't we bring all the, whatever conceptual plans are needed to the next meeting? We approve, make whatever minor modifications, and we can put this thing to bed the following meeting with definitive plans on all the mitigation, definitive plans on the subdivision, the crossings, everything.
Yeah, the conceptual plans, unless Bill changes them, we'll bring these same ones back. If you could just complete it, so you can just revise whatever conceptual.
I think the only one that I was looking at, any changes was Ashworth at Rochdale.
Okay.
And I'll make that one change.
And then Behit wanted to see the island at Route 20, was it?
No, the, Albert Street.
The triangle.
The triangle.
Okay.
Can you shoot that by email to Lloyd?
I need to know whether or not you have the parcel in play now, the triangle.
On the triangle?
On what side of Albert?
This is at 20, right?
No.
I have a signed P and S, I have a signed P and S that I put in the book. I'll give you a copy.
Because we were gonna go over the, the line on the private parcel in order to meet what you had suggested previously. We did that conceptually, but we didn't have the land.
Yeah, that's the P and S that I gave you a copy of at the last meeting.
But, but again, that is subject to revision approval by the Mass Land Authority, just get through 20.
Well, I don't need to buy anything up there. Right, you're asking about the triangle. You're talking about La Salle.
Yeah, we're talking about Albert at Blaker.
He wants to see Albert at 20.
Where the island is, and at Albert and 20, Bill and I discussed it, well, showed him the templates on there. This was going to be, if the traffic light is not installed as of the date you open up the gate with 185 units built or whatever.
Correct.
Then the island has to be installed.
Correct.
All right, and the island is doable within the layout, and within the part of the widening that we're doing already on Albert.
We just want to tie everything down to plans and.
Well, I, conceptually, as long as Bill has already reviewed it and, and okay, said that, I'm okay with it, but Albert Street and Blakers, what we talked about, that we're gonna shift the.
That's right.
The, the concept further north, I think, I'm sure the board would like to see what it looks like.
Yeah, that's.
And I think we should have as part of the condition.
No, I, I like it, I know. All right, so we'll bring.
We'll come back on the 27th, see, see as far as we can get.
Hopefully stamp approval on everything and bring back all the final plans to the next meeting and put it to bed.
Could you give us a time, Adam, do you know?
I would need a motion from the board.
Oh, sorry.
It would be 7:20 would be the next open time.
I'll make a motion to 7:20 on the 27th.
All those in favor? Hi, all those opposed, it is a vote?
7:20 it is?
Gentlemen, always a pleasure. Have a good evening. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Great job.
Do we need an extension, Adam?
Uh, no, I think they're good until the end of the line.
Anyways.
Adam just got a chill.
I'll give you a fax in the morning.
We're still, that was eight o'clock.
Adam, you want me to sign an extension, or we run to your office and I could grab that envelope from you?
Oh, yeah.
And I'll sign the extension.
Yeah.
All right, moving right along.
All these changes, which, which we want to make sure you get them next week.
Sure, I'll do my best.
God knows how fast next week will come, but, you know.
It's coming fast and fast.
The thing is, we're getting to the.
I'm ready, yeah. So it's my job, it's here. The time I need to spend on these things is.
Oh, yeah, it's getting less and less, I agree. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
Jeff, Bill, good seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, thank you. We're getting. All right, next item up on the agenda is a discussion for Robin Hill's memorandum of understanding with Pam Brown. I take it you must be Pam Brown?
All the way from Bedford.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you.
I met you when you were in Andrewville.
Yes.
Did a seminar at it.
I run around doing those ones for a while. I feel like a midget. Yeah. You did that on purpose.
It's a wonderful life.
All right.
One of my favorite movies.
Is the window not working this place? Is it hot in here? Is it?
She taxed dollars at work.
I don't know. Thermos.
It's a test to see if I can stay awake.
There you go. All right. This is basically the discussion again between the board and Ms. Brown to go over conditions for the subdivision. So on my proper, you already had it from when I came. Go over conditions on mitigation and possible.
Probably have no one to.
Wake me up. I've actually brought some revised. Adam had sent over, we'll send a few down that way.
Okay.
Dangerously close to that window.
All right.
Now, is this different than what we went through last? You weren't here last time.
No, but Adam forwarded over comments that had been made last time.
Okay.
And sort of, you know, here are the issues. So this is revised slightly to reflect that. There may be an extra one down there. It's supposed to.
Still different than that.
They screw it closed.
Was that?
No.
So, because I'm not, wait, the one we went off on last time was.
Was the MOU.
Yeah, Pam's memorandum of understanding, I believe. Last, what was it?
No.
No, this wasn't. The one what was?
What I just circulated is a slightly revised version of, I think, what you reviewed last month.
Yes.
What you had sent me with some redlining.
Correct.
Should look.
This is the one I just.
Oh, okay. This is what it looked like last time.
Is that the one we went through last?
And unfortunately, I didn't put a date on it, but the new one has some underscoring at the bottom of the page to see if you can make sure you're holding the right one.
Oh, yeah, this is the one we went through.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Which, was this from?
That's my notes. Attorney, yes, that was from Attorney Brown.
It was.
Okay.
The first one on.
Everything that we've gotten on this project, as far as MOUs, has come from Attorney Brown.
Okay.
I would like that at the end of the meeting.
Basically, this is included in that. All right, so to go through, see the format's a little bit different again, which we had several scenarios that we talked about at last meeting. And then, actually, I had the chance to go out with Bill Coyle, our town engineer. I don't know, Pam, if you've met our town engineer.
I know.
Bill does a great job for the town. And we went through, and he conveyed some of his concerns going through. Bill was looking at the intersections down at Rochdale Street and Oxford Street, and also looking at Oxford Street and Pinehurst to determine what, which intersection was the best for the town since the applicant had left it to us whichever way we really wanted to go. I don't know. Have you had a chance to really? We just went through.
I do have some comments on it and on how I thought maybe we could approach it.
Yep.
And I went through each one of these items in the draft decision and commented. So I don't know, tell me to jump right to that one, how you want to proceed, but I can go right to that one. That was listed under what we had as phase three on the draft decision.
I think we have several different.
Well, step by step on these, isn't it?
All right.
Comment as we go.
All right, that's fine. That's what we're.
Mr. Chairman, maybe if you'll allow, I'd like to make just one really general comment related to both of these documents, just to make sure we're kind of setting the stage as we look at the details of this. The MOU, as you know, is part of what I believe might be appropriate to sort of set the stage for this volunteered mitigation. So we want it to be clear that these are things that the developer applicant have offered. And so when we come to a decision, they don't appear as if these are just demands that hadn't been discussed and so forth. So I thought it appropriate to do this simpler document prior to the close of your hearing and the actual decision that would set the stage. And I think you're all fairly understanding and comfortable of that. One of the things that popped out from Adam's notes, as I reviewed from your meeting last time, was sort of referring to the approved plans. My suggestion, which I've actually incorporated here, and you'll see it in underscore text that gets repeated a couple of times, is a suggestion that we refer to the, you know, the final set of the plans that have been, you know, submitted and reviewed, the proposed plans, I'd refer to it rather than the approved plans. Because again, we're considering something, and then it's this document that gets carried into the decision to say this is part of what we're considering is ultimately a signed MOU that gets incorporated into your decision-making process.
I guess that's part of what I wanted to bounce off of you to, we want to get something legally binding. When we grant this decision for the open space, we want to have it legally binding. And as part of that, part of my concern is a lot of these things were more in conceptual stage than final definitive stage. And it's a matter of how to tie it down.
Yes, and that's actually one of my next points. When I talked to Adam earlier, we started talking a little bit about how much detail we put here versus sort of a commitment to do it and then working out the engineering and the details. And I think we're going to get to that probably as we go through these. So my suggestion would be to lean more towards making sure we understand what we're talking about, but avoiding getting so specific, you're boxing yourself in to not have the flexibility to do it right in an agreement.
Right, but I guess my concern, and no disrespect intended to the applicant, it's just it's a very big project for the town. Our biggest since I've been on the board and probably the biggest ever as far as the subdivision. And I'm just very antsy about.
And I'm obviously less intimately familiar with the ground here than you are.
Yeah.
So I need to rely on you.
No, just having everything tied down.
You know, I think what we can do is, one, if we've got the right intersections, we've got the right roadways, I think we can do language. I've made an attempt here in another revision that just happened today to tackle that. And then, you know, possibly as we get this discussion, I mean, I would, my hope would be that we can get through this at a level everyone's comfortable so that when you're getting ready to really finalize the decision, this thing's already signed.
Yeah.
Right? So that you're able to have this fully executed binding, because it is a contract, and, you know, carrying it out so that you actually have this to rely on it when you finalize your decision. And hopefully, we'll get to that too tonight. But maybe we can pick through it, and Bill can jump in with the specifics we're talking about. You know, everyone's here, so if there's agreement, we can just tweak the language as we go.
Okay.
As with most MOUs, the beginning, you know, the whereas is really just to set the stage. This is why we're here, what we're talking about. And then the important stuff is the now therefore, where we have the enumerated paragraphs. I don't know if you want to walk through each one of these. You know, obviously, it tells the purpose. I think the lettered items under two are really the key pieces of this. A couple of them, for the purposes here, have been combined, as you had talked about last time, so that we're keeping this intersection all together. When we get to discussing it, and in the decision itself, the decision will refer to these items in more detail, but also in a phased manner. Here, it's just what do we agree to do? In the decision, it will be in what manner are they phased? And I think that's going to be, you know, a further discussion about what's appropriate phasing.
Right.
So that it may be that we're only patching initially, and it's six months later or even a year later where the road actually gets reclaimed and reworked. And, you know, so those are details that you all need agreement on. But it may be appropriate that, you know, we're laying a sewer line, we're going to patch it, and it's the following phase where the road actually gets completely redone. So again, discussion items, I'm not going to judge right now on where you are with that.
Now, even, I mean, as far as to get down to detail, as far as, you know, roads being cleaned as you're, you know, doing work and, you know, sweeping and patching and how much is open, you know, before you patch or how often you patch or things like that, I don't know whether we get into it here or we get into it.
That's decision. Those are details, I think, that are.
Of the subdivision.
Or in the special.
Because this is really an open space permit.
Right, and it's a special permit to allow this form of development.
Right. Would we get into it in the subdivision itself or would we get into it in this permit?
Some general language is okay in this permit because I've actually drafted the decision as, and we can again talk about this, but I've drafted the decision because there's so much overlap, as a preliminary plan decision for subdivision as well as the special permit, sort of a joint decision on the two. So because of the subdivision piece of it, while it's preliminary, it's not inappropriate to refer to that. But the nitty gritty detail is really going to be your bulleted points on the definitive subdivision approval. Street sweeping and.
Mr. Chairman, as we, what we're going to have is multiple sheets in this plan of these different off-site mitigations, you know, the exact plan, intersection improvements, whatever, sewer line. And on each of those sheets should be all the notes that you're, I think you're talking about, the requirements of sweeping, how many feet you can do at a time, whatever. I mean, that would typically be, you know, incorporated into that part of the plan.
No, that's fine. I guess my big concern from past experience, it's always the special permit that carries more teeth than the definitive plan. So I want to make sure we get everything tied down under the special permit so that the definitive plan isn't an issue down the road.
Yeah, my thought on the last item we were discussing and sort of keeping things clean and so forth, those, you know, you don't need them to agree to anything to put those conditions in. I mean, the typical best management practices, that kind of thing, you want to have there. But for the board to be able to condition that in the definitive plan approval is really not a problem.
Because even with the inspection process of the subdivision, where it's so big, you know, most of our subdivisions are probably 10, 15 houses. I mean, we have a few that are into the 30s, but nothing this size. So even, it's really too much for the town engineer to keep an eye on where he does the smaller subdivisions. But something this size, I think the board in the past had thought about having a consultant come on board to inspect the whole subdivision as it's built.
And, you know, it'll depend partly on how fast it goes and whatever, what else you have going on in town.
Would that have to be in this agreement? Well, that's.
I think that's your next step.
Okay.
I don't think that's critical to be in the MOU.
Okay.
This needs to be more related to those items that are really, and some of these may be perfectly appropriate mitigation and, you know, clarify mitigation as opposed to volunteered improvements.
Yeah.
There's a law here. It's a big project. Clearly, some of it's mitigation, some of it's volunteered. We're putting it all down here so there's no question that all of this has been offered by the applicant. And then you don't have a question. You're not in court debating whether, you know, this is what they meant or what they agreed to do during the process. But, you know, I think some of those items clearly would be mitigation. So if you're creating a project that's so big that's adding, you know, it's kind of like adding school kids, well, you're adding demands on staff that can't be handled in-house, then I think it's appropriate to talk about, you know, whether you need some, you know, review engineer, you know, possibly if the market's still awful and nothing else is happening but this, you're fine, but we'll see.
All right. Well, why don't we start at the top, I guess, and work our way through as far as items? So it'd be public sewer installation in 2,500 feet of Rochdale Street between Old Rochdale Street and the first manhole east of Leicester Street intersection, which includes reclaiming the 2,500 feet of Rochdale Street pavement for the limit of a new sewer installed between Old Rochdale Street and the first sewer manhole east of Leicester Street. Minor widens to accommodate the 24 feet width, where existing shoulder width can accommodate the widening without interfering with private or budding properties and environmental areas. Such improvement shall be substantially, as illustrated by plans presented to the Auburn Planning Board, it is the understanding and intent of the parties that a 24-foot wide roadway be constructed where feasible, acknowledging there are areas along this segment of roadway where 24 feet would be unattainable or unrealistic. Does that sound?
That's what we discussed last.
Yeah.
My only footnote there would be, I think that suggests, actually, as I've inserted this, but looking back to the whereas, this is maybe actually defined with the plans. I've used a capital P on it. We can confirm what the final revision date is so that the plans we're referring to here are actually the plans, your last round, the plans.
By plans presented to the Auburn Planning Board, but I guess I would want to have a trigger that are approved by the Auburn Planning Board or something.
Well, see, we need to be careful there because you haven't approved it yet, and we want this come.
Well, that's my concern.
So that's where I'm saying, if you're at the plans that you're looking at, you're ready to approve or you're reviewing and you're feeling comfortable with.
All we've done is conceptual plans, nothing finite.
Right. Oh, so you're looking to the future.
Yes.
We're at the preliminary plan stage.
Yeah, see, my thought was to refer to the last.
But I guess, and I understand that, I was just looking for language to trigger it that the plans would have to be approved.
Ultimately.
Ultimately satisfactory to the planning board for the little miscellaneous things here and there.
See, but as far as, as far as what the applicant is offering for the purposes of an understanding here, is what they're showing you on paper now. And so my suggestion would be that we define this most recent final plan set that you're ready to act on. Not that that's the final, and that's why I say substantial compliance with, so that obviously they can change, or we could actually say, as they may be amended through the definitive plan process. That might work. I'm not trying to say this is it, the final final.
No.
But at the same time, this needs to come before an approval, so you can't really approve it. Now I see where you're going, though, what you're saying ultimately to be approved.
I'm looking to keep enough teeth to push, I mean, I don't see, you know, big issues like where there's wetlands on both sides of Rochdale Street. Obviously, you're not going to get 24 feet, and we're not going to look for that. I can't even think of something that comes up, but just in case something minor comes up that the planning board wants to see it a certain way, that they would have the teeth to push it that way for minor design issues.
So I guess my suggestion then would be to say plans, and so if we define plans to be this last round you've seen, and then to say plans presented to the Auburn Planning Board as they may be finally approved through the definitive plan process. I have real concerns with saying approved plans on plans that you actually haven't approved yet in a document like this.
Yeah.
Okay? When you get to the special permit and the preliminary decision, you're going to actually be approving a set of plans, but this is coming first. And it may be the same set of plans, but for this purpose, you haven't done it yet. And then, but I think to leave open the opportunity for flexibility through your definitive process, you have every right to negotiate and debate, you know, exactly how that design comes. And I think that's the point where you have fully engineered plans of what these improvements are going to look like. So I know it, I know you want to jump ahead and make sure we've got it right, and you want to have the opportunity to really get it the way the town wants it. But for the purposes of agreeing on what the commitment is prior to a decision, I think we have to refer to plans that have been presented in their conceptual form, to the greatest level we have available at this point in time.
So we're more or less agreeing to a scope at this point?
Yes, yes. And, you know, they're agreeing to upgrade these intersections, widen roads, and so, you know, lay sewer lines and so forth. And that's really where we are with the MOU. The decision gets slightly more detailed, and your real teeth on all of those nitty gritty details.
The decision for the special permit or for the?
Both, both. And there's kind of two levels because all of the engineering.
Because I was kind of envisioning this as almost being the decision for the special permit, but you're saying it's not.
No, you should have that, which is much longer.
Okay, okay.
And we'll detail through that, but so this, so some of our things are blended in here.
the, you know, to the greatest level we have available at this point in time.
So we're more or less agreeing to a scope at this point?
Yes, yes. And, you know, they're agreeing to upgrade these intersections, widen roads, and so, you know, lay sewer lines and so forth. And that's really where we are with the MOU. The decision gets slightly more detailed, and your real teeth on all of those nitty-gritty details is...
The decision for the special permit?
Yes.
Or for the...
Both, both. And there's kind of two levels, because all of the engineering details...
Because I was kind of envisioning this as almost being the decision for the special permit, but you're saying it's not.
No, you should have that, which is much longer.
Okay, okay.
And we'll detail through that. But so this, so some of our things are blended in here. They're not phased in the MOU. It's really just, that's why I was trying to set this stage when we first talked.
No, I understand.
Because we need to have a formal commitment by these guys that we're going to do these things.
Okay.
Because you're going to consider that when you're rendering a decision on the special permit and the preliminary subdivision plan. You're going to say, okay, look, they've offered all of this stuff, so we know that we can require those as part of our decision, which you will do in the special permit. And then as you get, move on to the definitive plan stage, now it'll be a matter of not, can we get them to do it? Because they've already committed to it. It'll be more just how do we work out the details of the design.
Okay.
I would envision that the definitive, it's just like you did at the prior hearing, you know, if there's a wetland, you know, you gotta, there's a tug of war between wetland filling and, you know, and everyone's got to use some common judgment. Do we have this wide here, or do we go fight with the Conservation Commission?
I guess I'm not concerned as far as the definitive plan through the subdivision itself. I guess I'm more concerned with definitive plan of the mitigation work, you know, where it's kind of outside.
And if it's an environmental issue, you know, maybe the planning board has to also go to the Conservation Commission and say, why is it a good idea to fill it in? You know? I mean, because it's town improvements.
It's like oil and water.
No, but it is town property and town improvements, and if you think it's got to be 24 for a mile straight, instead of going into 22 for a little...
You'll be doing wetland replication over on your open space.
Yeah.
You know, the Conservation people better than we do, so speak to them, you know?
That said, there were a couple, what were the words we were deleting?
Oh, was it "attempt"?
Possible?
The attempt.
Attempt. I have deleted throughout the attempt, because I think this text is actually clear and still gives flexibility. If it's not possible, it's not possible.
Yeah.
In terms of, and the way I think we read now is, well, where it can accommodate, and then we talk about budding properties and environmental areas. It comes up a couple of times, but I think what we've done is, they have to do more than attempt. It has to be really not realistic.
I like that thought, yeah. Do you like that?
Sounds like your word.
All right.
Okay.
Uh, next item.
Can I, oh, I had a comment on this one. On when I was looking at the draft decision phase one, this was also listed, again, in a different order, and in the end of it, it said temporary patch of pavement. And I just want to make sure that somewhere in here that we have a timeline specified. And what I had written down was road to be pulverized and paved after first winter from date of sewer installation and prior to the following winter. In other words, we don't go past, after the first winter, they're in there pulverizing and paving it. That there's some language in there to have that.
That'll, we'll work on that in the decision?
That's in the decision.
What I did, actually, when I combined some of these items, was deleted this part that said patching.
Right.
Because ultimately, we could leave it in, but I think ultimately what we're saying the commitment is, is to lay the sewer and to reclaim the road.
So the, right now, we're just going through the scope, and then we're going to talk about comments and the decision.
Right. The decision itself is where the phasing is laid out.
Okay.
And that where some of this detail comes back. And so in, you know, in that case, you are going to lay the sewer and patch. And if you've got timeframes, I'm interested to hear, because we can look at this and how it's how we have...
Well, I think we have to talk about that a little more.
Yeah, I have plenty of comments.
So they stay in phase one or phase two, but there's a time delay and...
I think we have to talk to the applicant about that and...
Right.
The town engineer and amongst ourselves about that, because I think there's some variations between them all. See what, they can live with, we can live with. That's all. All right. Um, next item is to realign both the Leicester Street approaches to Rochdale Street, install flush island signage and proposed striping for CSX underpass, purchase land easements from four butters for road improvements at a cost not to exceed $60,000. Extend box culverts and file environmental permit applications as co-applicant with the Town of Auburn. I guess...
I thought we were concerned about that not to exceed.
Yeah, myself also. And I, I understand where the applicant is at with it, but I, where, well, where do we stand as far as agreements? Because I thought you had...
I just had verbal meetings with each party.
Oh, okay. See, I thought you had...
But, but I would never...
Something in writing that they signed or something, no?
Well, they wouldn't do that unless they gave them a deposit. And, you know, I don't have any decision from the planning board whether we're doing this.
Yeah.
You know, I can't, people want $5,000 deposits.
But right now, tentatively...
I mean, I'm, I'm thinking in good faith they're going to live up to what would our verbal...
No, I understand. I'm just, as of right now, at this moment, you basically have everybody tied down for that $60,000.
Verbally.
Yes, verbally.
And, and as soon as we have a preliminary decision, I would get that in p and s's. So you'll have that.
Yeah.
If there's a problem, you'll know about that at definitive.
Okay, all right. How do we best do that? Is that, I, again, like, even, even with, I know the applicant gave us a bunch of estimates.
Right.
But depending on inflation, depending on this or that, I'd rather not tie it down to dollar amounts. I'd rather tie it down to the work.
I'm sympathetic on this one, because if you have a decision that requires something, and not that they, you know, agree, not that they'll do that.
Right.
They may be completely agreeable and happy to have the improvements, but hypothetically, someone knows something's required and the price just escalates. And that's just, you know...
Or they won't sell it.
It doesn't, right.
No, no, I understand.
They think they can stop the project by not selling.
Let's say the tax assessor just hit up on the house. They didn't get an appeal, and they're bitter at the town. And they just say, we're not doing anything to help this town of Auburn, you know? Is that our fault? So we might have to have Lloyd come in and realign the plan and work around these people's property.
My expectation is that if it's a few thousand dollars, you guys aren't even going to raise an issue. You'll just do it.
Right, right. But if they say no...
During the hearing process, though, we had discussed this, Dave, and you had even offered saying that if that came to a head like that, that somebody would stop us.
Yeah.
You would go to the selectmen and see if we couldn't do an eminent domain.
Which, I'll be honest, I, I know they're not crazy about it, especially after the high school eminent domain taking. So it's not a hot topic in town.
But we've approached it, so we don't have, this is, you don't have to...
Yeah. And I, I think you're pretty close with your agreements. But I, I guess, and I understand if it's, it's not doable, it's not doable, but I'd like to get it tied down as best we can.
Realistically, if you had these appraised, you would be what, at about a third of this price?
Yeah, I mean...
Per square foot, because you have small square feet of wetlands that are useless.
10,000, 600 square feet or something, you know?
To the chair, my comment on this one was, and again, saying, if the, the amount goes over $60,000, there needs to be something there, some protection for the town. If we have an estimate of what the construction cost is going to be, potentially, we could have a statement, again, I don't know if it's a decision, that says if the cost of the easement exceeds $60,000, the applicant will transfer the sum of certain dollars to complete this or other mitigation relative to this project. So in other words, the, it comes out, say, the cost of $250,000 or $400,000, whatever it is to do the work, that there's an, there's a dollar value in there, because they can't do the work without the right-of-way. And if the, if the selectmen are reluctant to have a taking or vote on a taking, there should be another mechanism there that the town gets some funds for, whether it's, we proceed with this to some extent, or we end up paving all of Leicester Street or West, West Street with the money.
I mean, I have no problem with that concept, that if it becomes undoable for any legal reason, and the town doesn't...
The dollar amount is only used as a backup.
We'll, yeah, we'll pay the town the budget amount for that, that improvement.
No, I know you said that in the past. But I, I, I guess, I just didn't want to be caught on the other end where prices have gone up or something, and now the prices aren't the same.
Well, land didn't go up.
No, but I know painting's gone up, fuel's gone up, trucking's gone up.
Construction's just down, though.
Everything's down.
Because everyone's, everyone's hurting for work.
But that, that be worded such that it could be used somewhere else.
So you weren't at the meetings, but we kind of offered it.
Now, my suggest, I'm actually not uncomfortable leaving a number like this. It, this obviously is just for acquisition. It's not the value of the work. You're raising an issue about what's the value of the work.
Correct.
And so hypothetically, I guess what I would do is, for the MOU, leave it here, for the decision saying, in the event that, you know, the item to be cannot be accomplished, the applicant shall, you know, deposit with the town $60,000 plus, and then we can put a, either get an estimate that you're comfortable with, or, I mean, you know, a decision time, or, or just some tax to say, you know, the estimate plus 10%, you know, that's reasonably agreed by the town engineer or something like that, to give you sort of a formula for coming up with that number that ultimately...
Or the town can take that, that one parcel by eminent domain, and then we still do the improvement.
Yeah, we can leave some options. But again, that would probably, I mean, I guess you could spell it what you budgeted for each of, I mean, if it's one parcel, then you could help.
Yeah, I mean, I just had, I just did one in North, you guys are scared to death of it. I don't know. I just did one in Northborough like three months ago with that town. I've done numerous ones with Shoesbury, you know, it's just...
I know the town just went to court over some issues and...
Just road widening stuff, you know?
I just hear rumors, but I don't think it went very well.
They're just making curves and making roads safer. They're not taking people's front yards, and they're not taking, you know, valuable pieces, but they're making their roads work better, and that's kind of an acceptable eminent domain thing.
Before the train leaves the station, I'm not in favor of going eminent domain.
No, I understand. I, I don't think anybody's really thrown, it's, it's a slight, slight, slight...
We're just leaving that as an option.
If the assumption on the part, because the chairman mentioned this, that the board can go along with it, and there are two other members who may very well...
No, I don't, I think we said...
This member will not...
That it doesn't have a great track record in town.
I won't support it at all.
Okay.
No, I don't think there's a need for eminent domain.
I realize it's not in here, but I just want to go on record right now. I will not support that. I will go to the selectmen, and I will oppose it.
Okay.
People shouldn't lose their property.
So then it's just the money issue.
You'd oppose, sorry, you'd oppose an eminent domain taking if they don't want Auburn?
Yeah, I, I can't say I'd say the same, but, I mean, I, I think this intersection is an important intersection to get straightened out. Very big safety factors and everything else.
But I also think that that is not something that we should be doing to further a private interest.
It's really to further a safety interest for the town, because even now, it isn't a safe scenario. And I think the parcels that we're talking about, it isn't like taking a person's house. It's a, all parcels are small wedges of land that aren't even near the houses, you know, so I think it's a very minimal...
You have your position.
No, I understand, I understand. That's fine.
Okay, so I've made a note here that if we get through this for the MOU, that we'll, when we get to the decision, that we're going to tweak some language that refers to, in the event of the inability to actually create this improvement, what are we going to do? And we can talk more about what we'll do.
Okay. And then, improve Old Rochdale Street, between Rochdale Street and proposed subdivision road, utilizing the existing stream culvert crossing. Included proposed sewer connection to Rochdale Street with improved Old Rochdale, within the improved Old Rochdale Street. The applicant shall work with the board on final design of this roadway segment and culvert crossing. This, I'm a little bit comfortable with, because I always was under the impression this was going to be a full subdivision road right up to Rochdale Street. This is, you know, I think, we mentioned it last week, this is really the first part of it. Have you measured this crossing, Lloyd, to see how wide it is? Actually, I meant to, we were up there yesterday, and I meant to...
I know you're talking about...
He said it's in good shape, but I'm wondering how wide it is.
It was built in '56. It's at a skewed angle, unfortunately, because what they had was, Old Rochdale took up like a 30-foot radius, went over the culvert, and then took another 30-foot radius. So for us to go across it and have a decent radius coming across here, I think it's like a 275-foot radius. We're going kind of kitty-corner to the walls, so we can get 22 feet through there without a problem, okay? If we go any wider than that, then the culvert isn't wide.
And so it sounds like we're going to have to do something with the culvert, then.
To, to go wider than 22 feet.
Right.
What we're asking is something like right at this crossing. We can go 28 feet if you want, up until the culvert, and then narrow down for the culvert crossing. We're going to cantilever out a sidewalk beyond that, so that's not part of this width, all right? It would be the 22 feet of pavement. There would be a couple of feet behind the curb, basically, to put in effect the Jersey barrier across this crossing, like we're talking about previously with guardrail and stuff.
I mean, if it's that narrow, I, I would think we'd have to widen the culvert.
It's, it's not 22 feet narrow, okay? It's at, it's at an angle like this.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying.
So we're hitting this corner, and we're hitting this corner, and we're wasting, in effect, six feet. If we could put a tighter radius, we would. That's what the layout that exists allows. We're going to give some land to widen the layout, but that doesn't help that crossing, because we're coming in from the other direction. We'll bring in with the definitive plans of the actual design of this road coming across this culvert. As I say, if we go across there, we put Jersey barriers on either side and guardrails approaching, and then we have a sidewalk outside of this, basically, which spans the stream, right over, outside the culvert.
Right, but you're still not at 28 feet going across it either.
Absolutely not.
Right.
This is an existing town road.
Like, I don't think 28 underneath the bridge either, I don't think.
It's an existing town road.
28...
Well, underneath the bridge, how wide are you, Lloyd? I mean, if you're going to lead up to it, why would you have to...
He's on a, there's a culvert.
You're talking about the one that's further up on Rochdale?
No, this is on Old Rochdale, which is a cross from a dump.
All right.
Really, what I consider inside the subdivision, but technically, I guess it isn't.
It's a surprisingly large culvert that's there. It is in good condition.
Right. But it sounds like it needs to be widened.
Well, I, I don't know if Lloyd can look at the alignment at all and try to get, because I know we were just talking about 24 feet on the previous...
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to try to get 24, because that would match up with every, you know, Old Rochdale Street's, everything's 24 up there, and we're going into essentially a dead end. So why are we, I know you want 28 for people parking in front of houses, but like we said before, this is, there's no houses down where this is. So if, if, for a mile of Rochdale to get there is at 24, going in there is 24, and when you get the houses, you open up to 28 for parking.
I guess...
Would that be a happy meeting there?
I'd like to follow Rochdale Street subdivision standards, and if there's an issue where we can't get there, it's, it's a question whether the board waives it, which we'll look at.
It's an existing roadway, which we're improving to the best of our ability. The end of it, as we approach Rochdale...
You say it's existing. It's a paper street, basically.
Yeah.
It's not a roadway.
It's an existing, it's a legal street.
I understand, but it's basically a paper street. It's not paved, it's not gravelled, it's, you know...
Well, it's got gravel.
Well, maybe 40 years ago.
Well, do you have a thing called, do you have a thing called minimum town standards in this town? You know, when you bring paper streets up to a minimum?
We have subdivision standards.
You don't have a thing called minimum? I think the state has a minimum town standard.
We did away with those, and call them subdivision standards, because we ran into problems with minimum town standards.
Yeah, most towns have that. I thought that was a state statute.
What we'd like to do is to give land on our side of, of Old Rochdale, so that we can put a 90-degree angle intersection at the side of Rochdale. We go in, we sweep to the right, but then we're going to sweep to the left and go across this skewed bridge, or culvert, really. But the end of it, up at Rochdale, where all the cars come to a stop at the stop sign, would be similar to the way Bryn Mawr.
I mean, I would just assume go through this with the definitive subdivision plan, which I would consider part of the subdivision, but...
Right.
And not so much call this mitigation, because Rochdale Street goes by, this road, although it's a paper street, hasn't been used by the public in, I can't, it's got to be 50, 60 years anyways.
And that brings me back to saying some of these things would be mitigation for the project.
Right.
Part of the subdivision plan, but, you know, I think you're, you're erring on the side of conservative, you know, being conservative to list them all out, so that we at least know that we were talking about doing something.
But I guess rather than just improving it, I, I would feel more comfortable, if we're going to list it here, is bringing it to subdivision standards.
To satisfy, to the letter of the law, you were exact, dotting every I and T for your regulations.
Go ahead.
We absolutely can't use that culvert. We have to blast through 600 or 700 feet of wetland, a brand-new stream crossing, and fill in tens of thousands of square feet of wetlands. Or we could sneak across this culvert.
Why don't we even get 24 feet?
We'll try to get 24.
Why don't we list it as subdivision standards for now, and we'll work it out? Because that's part of, you know, when I envisioned all your cuts and fills going through the hills, that's all part of the definitive subdivision. I think this culvert crossing is really not that.
Well, that is, but this is a town road, so therefore we're modifying the town road.
I mean, if we end up going before the concomitant, say, look, we could do 24 here and not touch the well and, or the planning board wants 28, and this is a disaster, we'll let them come into your...
[laughing]
No, I'm serious. They can come into your meeting, you know, and, and not dependent on you, but I'm saying, hopefully we can find an acceptable way to use the existing culvert that works for you guys.
You know, I...
Well, that's all she'd done in the definitive.
We haven't even looked at the design of it. We've never even seen the culvert.
I didn't think we were, we weren't approving anything here either, though.
Right, no, we're, we're approving the special permit.
Right.
Which I wasn't prepared to get into this culvert, because I always envisioned it as part of the subdivision, but I guess, you know, it's out there.
Maybe, could I suggest, since they have to actually agree to sign this, maybe we can, if you're...
Well, there's one other sticking point coming up.
Okay. Well, my thought, my thought is, is that it may, you know, there may or may not be an ability to do it. You certainly could, on your own accord, insert subdivision standards into the decision, and again, we can keep talking about it, whether it's feasible or realistic. But for the purposes of this, you want to get this document signable sooner rather than later. And what I hear right now is that they're, you know, they don't have enough confidence that it can be done to commit to signing something that says they can do something they can't do.
Well, I mean, ultimately, the subdivision wouldn't be built off of that dirt road the way it is. Wouldn't be approved.
I hear one of the board members.
I would think. Would you approve it under the existing conditions of that road, Old Would you approve it under the existing conditions of that road, Old Rochdale Street right now?
Oh, I'm not, I'm not saying without upgrade, but, but I guess if I'm weighing, you know, a twenty-two or twenty-four-foot upgrade to, I guess, most of the communities I work with would probably, again, depending on, you know, not as the only access, certainly, but would probably, you know, if it's secondary access to part of the subdivision, it'd probably be agreeable just to avoid the environmental problem. But it does require.
But you're also talking, this subdivision has two ways out, this is one of them, and two hundred houses on the other side of the culvert, you know.
What's the suggested language that you're thinking?
Well, my thought would be, for the purposes of the MOU, I mean, they're committing to whatever they're committing to, and I don't hear them committing to subdivision standards right now. For the purposes of the special permit decision, I, it may not even be right there, but it's definitely.
Do we even go with the memorandum of understanding then, and just go with the decision?
Can we hear what she has to say?
I'm sorry, okay.
We actually are paying her to be here to give her expertise, aren't we?
Go ahead.
I would, I would probably, and again, I'd rather have something in here than nothing. You could delete this altogether and try to take it up at the definitive process, that would be one option. At the same time, while it may be absolutely necessary they do upgrades, I think to at least get, I mean, they can come back and say, "All we committed to was that," but it's still your purview to say, "We want it to be subdivision standards," or "We want it to be closer to subdivision standards." You have the authority to waive your standards under subdivision control. So it's legally feasible, but it's gonna be up to the board, all of you, to determine what's appropriate when you actually get looking at design and talking with the town engineer.
I mean, if you read this verbatim, that's exactly what it says, "We're gonna work with the board with the final design."
Right.
It didn't say by any means say you're gonna approve anything less than a full subdivision.
That, that last sentence I added today to try to start speaking.
It doesn't say you're gonna approve less than a full subdivision.
Right.
It's.
That sentence I added this afternoon because of what Evan had shared with me.
It just says improved within the improved Old Rochdale Street.
No, the last.
So it says, "The applicant shall work with the board on final design of this roadway segment and culvert crossing."
But it doesn't, it doesn't say you're gonna waive anything less than a full subdivision.
It doesn't say you're gonna go to a subdivision.
But it does also mention that you're utilizing the existing stream culvert crossing, so we can perhaps do something with that.
Doesn't mean that couldn't be one lane.
Not, 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 not pointed to that, I'm just saying.
No, I don't care if you change it, we're not trying to, by the way, if you guys don't like, you know, this is the way I do it, when I sell houses to people. You know, I negotiate with them, I do all their extras, at the end of the day, if they don't wanna buy the house, I don't try to sell them the house. You know, if you guys don't like the plan, I'm not gonna be beating on your head to approve the plan, we'll do something different, you know? I mean, we gotta work together.
Right.
If the chairman is uncomfortable with the language utilizing the existing stream culvert crossing, if that's, if that is.
You know, the existing crossing, I have, if, if these guys think it sound, I have no problem with it, and, and everybody seems to think it sound. It really comes down to just a width. So I have no problem utilizing the existing, but it's a matter of whether we have to add to this to get to an appropriate width.
Why can't we say may, may utilize it?
Right.
We may utilize it instead of utilizing.
Well, that's just what I'm trying to find, a middle ground where we can.
And, and I mean, just within the improved Old Rochdale Street, I mean, it's kind of vague, you know? It worries me.
Yeah, you may be able to do a land swap to, to get additional land on another side, to swing it in to get twenty-four feet.
I think that word may might. Well, may deals with the other part.
Oh, may and shall, we've been through that before, you know?
Well, the thing is, instead of saying you don't like it, what is it that you want there, and then we can see if we agree to it.
Well, I think that's, I drew it to bring it to subdivision standards, and then we can always back off of it.
Yeah, I don't care, just put it in there, I really don't care.
Okay.
No, I mean, 'cause we'll never get this whole project on the way we're going.
No.
If you don't like the plan at the end of definitive, then you're not gonna approve it.
I don't have a problem with it one way or the other, I'm just trying to find.
No, and I appreciate it, Dan. No, no, don't take me wrong, but I'm just saying, if you guys don't like the plan for any reason, you don't like the capital letters on the cover, you might turn it down. I mean, you're either gonna like the plan or you don't, and it's so complex.
No, I mean, I'm not saying we're not gonna work with you, we'll work with you on radiuses, this, that, providing it's not ridiculous.
For some reason you think.
And we have, you know, but.
Right, and for some reason, I don't know why you think you're getting pinned down in a, this is a preliminary subdivision plan. My god, every other town, like, that's a piece of ragged paper in most towns, the definitive is what counts.
To me, the, the special permit to tie down all the mitigation, and I wasn't envisioning this as part of mitigation, I was originally thinking the subdivision was going out to Rochdale Street.
Well, I guess Lloyd suggested it was mitigation.
Are you more comfortable just taking it out?
What's that?
Are you more comfortable?
Yeah, why don't we just take that out?
We can remove the paragraph.
Yeah, I don't know, I.
Lloyd suggested it was mitigation in that we were approving an existing town way.
Yeah.
And so it was value-added to town property.
We're doing that with Rochdale Street, we're doing that with Lester Street, we're approving an existing town.
Right, those, I can see mitigation where the road exists, it's paved, it's being used every day, this has been abandoned basically, although technically, I guess it's.
But suppose we just delete this?
But it's basically an abandoned parcel almost that was used in someone's driveway for fifty years, you know what I mean?
Delete it.
I mean, what would the, what would Ms. Brown suggest?
I would suggest one of two things, either just leaving it, which just calls attention that we've been looking at it, and that they're agreeable to upgrading it without any details, or just delete it altogether.
And then we tie it down in the decision.
You're gonna tie it down in your, yeah, in the decision and/or the definitive decision.
I think we should leave it, that last sentence.
I think it should be in line too, but just say, "And may utilize the existing crossing."
I think you get a little more because it calls attention to it by leaving it, yeah.
All right, one member would like some type of language, "May utilize."
Leave it as it is, except say, at the, at the subdivision road, "And may utilize the existing stream culvert crossing."
I think that's a good condition.
Okay.
All right.
Dee.
Good. The next item.
That last sentence covers the thing as far as working together.
I tried. Go on.
"The gift Leicester Street land one hundred and eighty acres to the town of Auburn prior to transfer of deed, clean site of rubbish and debris at stream crossing, repair bridge for public pedestrian crossing use and for single-lane Auburn Town Maintenance Vehicles access to prior house site. Backfill burned house foundation."
It's like a novel, doesn't it?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Clean burned house rubble and debris, backfill swimming pool, grade house site, and loom and seed disturbed areas, which is fine, I guess my only question.
Hey, man.
Can we sit on the key?
Yep.
Lloyd is.
That's a long way.
It's loud, yeah. The hundred and eighty acres plus, there's actually like three hundred and fifty acres, all open space, is to be.
Well, well, the rest is an existing town.
What's that?
The rest is existing town.
No, I'm saying both, all the open space of the subdivision, and this is part of the open space.
This is separate.
Of the separate. No, this is, this is the four parcels, this is the give up within the council A.
No, this is not, it's not a gift.
Right.
It's part of the open space.
Is this any of your brother parcels?
It's a gift, though. I was, no, because the, the amount of houses was determined.
But I was under the impression that if you separated the two parcels and took the side where the houses are being constructed, that the amount of open space allotted within that group of parcels equals greater than the fifty percent required or forty percent required?
Forty, but the amount of houses was determined from both parcels.
Correct, but they're gifting this.
So we're talking about this.
Yes.
In addition to the parcels on the other side around the subdivision.
Right.
Actually, we had two hundred houses over here, a hundred over there, but then we backed down to two hundred period.
Total, right.
Which means that we had two hundred on this piece originally anyway, so that sets the number for your, your own thought right there.
Yeah.
So we're ignoring the fact that we even had a hundred over there. That's just a piece of land we're gonna gift to the town, no restriction.
But it, it's actually part of the subdivision open space.
No, it's not required open space.
There's more than forty percent here.
It is required, 'cause we never would've gave him, given him two hundred houses on the other side.
Understood, but let me chime in here if I, if I may. The way I looked at this, and I think partly the reason it's drafted this way, and I think maybe we should insert that, because we have a better reference to how these are labeled on the plans as parcel B, C, B, C, D, and E, so that we can clarify where this land is, you have an open space requirement as part of the subdivision. And again, we have it in this mitigate, or we have it in this MOU, so we have the commitment, they're gonna deed it to the town. I'd like to distinguish this open space, which actually really got to stay open, that's part of the special permit requirement, and then treat this as sort of excess open land that's being deeded to the town. One of the comments.
What benefit?
Well, one of the comments that I raised earlier is, "Do you want this restricted open space?" I know it was something that you wanted to talk about a little bit, or, you know, I know the goal right now is open to some natural resources, there's, you know, in, you know, species, there's all kinds of things, and in addition to existing town land that it abuts. So you're creating something great, and it may mean that every intent of the town right now is to keep it open land, conservation land. The caveat I had raised was, in what form do you want to hold that land? And sometimes town, I mean, here I would expect Auburn wants to accept it, but the town actually has to accept the donation of land through town meeting. In rare instances, a town will say no, and then you're stuck with, well, what do we do? And you can give it to a land trust, or, you know, Sudbury Valley Trustees, or, you know, somebody who can hold it, maintain it, and keep it open for you. In those instances, and the real issue is if it has a conservation restriction on it, if it's actually dedicated to open space, conservation or open space. We fall under Article ninety-seven, that actually would require legislative approval to actually remove the land or a portion of the land from that really restricted status. Now, that may be absolutely your desire, I'm just raising it as a caution and a consideration given the size, the area, the location of this land. If the town needs school, the town needs a ball field, the town, you know, some of those things, it might be considered removing it from that open space. You don't wanna have to get a two-thirds vote of town meeting and go to both branches of the legislature to pull it out.
Pam, we spoke to that last meeting.
You did, okay.
And we, there was discussion about it might be donated for municipal purposes or something, but for this time being, it's the town of Auburn, and if you wanna get a little tweaking language, you know, final disposition to be determined or something.
Well, what I did in this, since your last version.
You know, 'cause you guys got to talk about slack, and I forgot what you wanted.
I actually just, I inserted town of Auburn, it previously said open space. I deleted open space so that it's your discretion, they're gonna give it to you, town can decide what to do with it. And that would be my recommendation, and you may absolutely decide you want it restricted, you wanna put a conservation restriction on it, you wanna hold it, you know, the town and.
You could put or assign each of them, because in case the town didn't wanna take it and they wanna give it to an open space trust, you could.
The intent, though, also is, Dave, that all the open space over on the main piece will be given to the town, with the exception of the ball fields.
Yeah.
Okay, there's no problem.
Now, are you still meet the forty percent taking out the ball fields?
Yeah, we're like fifty-six percent.
On that side, yeah.
Open space.
Okay.
Because we're two hundred lots, we had three hundred lots over here before.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Okay, so there's a lot of open space, we're gonna give it to the town, again, as a gift, but we don't wanna do that till we're done, because we maybe need some of it for staging areas of each phase, so we won't be gifting that to, over to the town. I mean, maybe the upfront here where there's just.
Staging areas, so what does that mean? You're gonna destroy the land first?
No, we got open farm fields up here, we're gonna, we're gonna need to be able to move materials around, put equipment up there, and maybe we wanna use this upland area over here to do so. I'm just saying that we don't.
I guess if that's the case, I mean, and we can get into a more definitive plan, we'd like to know how it's gonna be left, or what land you're gonna be looking to use, or.
We'll have a pile of stumps like you can't believe.
No, I, yeah, yeah, yeah. I guess, I mean, again, this hasn't come up before, but, you know.
I agree, it hasn't come up before.
I just assumed it was gonna be all wooded, all this, and you weren't gonna use any of it.
Well, a bunch of it's wet, obviously.
Right.
And some of it is upland.
Wait, 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 I think what we need to do is, if we need staging areas, we'll show them on the plan.
That's.
And then we'll have language.
I just assumed that all the open space is gonna stay as it is today.
Yeah, he's scaring you, and I don't know why he's scaring you.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense to them to be cutting trees to create open areas to store.
It costs a lot of money to cut trees.
And you can condition the cleanup as part of the definitive.
I'm a nervous guy, don't scare me, Lloyd.
The idea was, you get that land up front, you know, you get to use it, we clean up the debris on there, we fix the bridge, all that good stuff, that's yours to use it, it pleads.
Yeah.
Right, and then this over here, we're gonna be working in here for eight years.
So we're gonna keep this here, just to simplify the process.
Yeah, I'm gonna insert a reference to the plan parcels B, C, D, and E.
Right, you've got that in your decision.
And I'll insert or S and A, is fine too.
In the decision, she already said B, C, D, E, but she separately said open space and A.
Are we gonna tie down the rest of the open space in a separate line? Are we gonna tie down the rest of the open space as a separate line?
Well, that's part of, that's part of the requirements, I don't think you need that in here.
Okay.
Because it's part of meeting the requirements of the subdivision.
You're required over forty percent of the space.
And it's, and it's part of the plan.
Can't grant it without it.
Right, exactly.
Right, exactly. Yeah, I don't think you need it on the other.
It's gonna show it on the open space right in the plan.
It will be in your decision, because you're gonna refer to the plan.
That's not gonna get him.
That you're approving, which show that land, and we can specifically call it out.
All right, all right, to move to the next item, reclaim.
It's in the decision. This is A, this is B, C, D, E.
Right, okay, yeah, we've got it.
Reclaim eight hundred and fifty linear feet of Rochdale Street pavement between east end of New Sewer, installed in a point approximately two hundred feet north of Chapin Way, minor widening of pavement to be, to provide twenty-four-foot width, where existing shoulder width can accommodate the widening without interfering with private abutting properties or environmental areas. Such improvement shall be substantially, as illustrated by the plans presented to the Auburn Planning Board. It is the understanding and intent of the parties that a twenty-four-foot wide roadway be constructed where feasible, acknowledging there are areas along this segment of road where a twenty-four-foot width would be unattainable or unrealistic. That's fine to me, having.
Yeah, again, I was trying to get text in there.
Language is familiar.
Without enumerating them, I'm always cautious of trying to point exactly where, 'cause you sometimes cause problems by listing things out.
Do you want the definitive plan language added, if anyone?
What's that?
Do you want the definitive language in there as well?
Well, I think we're saying we're just going conceptual right now, and then the definitive.
No, but in the earlier number two A, we did.
I can add the same text on it, please.
I'm just asking, as a general course, do we wanna be consistent throughout the document?
That's, that's fine, yeah. All right, next item, install traffic signal and any associated improvements at the intersection of Rochdale Street at Oxford Street North in accordance with the plans presented to the Auburn Planning Board, which these were real general, and right now, I think we're still debating which intersection, which we have to tie down before the next meeting. I just showed Bill the other option yesterday, I wanted to bounce it off of him to see what his thoughts were, whether we signalize Rochdale Street and Oxford Street, or we signalize Pinehurst and Oxford Street. The question was the hill, coming down the, the grade, and whether you could stop at that intersection, or whether you signalize the next one, and the gaps from that help this intersection, help Rochdale Street and Oxford Street from the previous. Ideally, I would just soon keep the light at Rochdale Street and Oxford Street, but.
But what I would probably suggest, and tie it up to the board, and I did call Mass Highway, tap their, their brains on this and see what they thought, 'cause I felt when we looked at it, Dave, it's not something that I could go out there and look at one peak hour morning and make a decision what intersection's better to signalize, and, you know, if we're gonna look at intersections, there's actually three intersections that are very closely located, all on Oxford Street North, you have the Rochale Street, Pinehurst, and you also have Auburn Street. Whether or not, is it feasible for that, for the consultant, for Lloyd, to do a traffic impact assessment, not a complete study, just an assessment, look at the level of service of the intersections existing, and then post-development, and also accident history, and then come up with what intersection would be most warranted and desirable to signalize. would be most warranted and desirable to signalize. So, if we're gonna spend money signalizing, which one would be better?
Lloyd, did you do any counts down there at all?
At Rochdale, yes.
At Rochdale?
At Rochdale, it warrants a signal. We also volunteered that if you really don't want to put it there, you want to put it on one of the others.
No, I know we discussed it. I wasn't sure how much of an analysis you did on traffic down there, but just at Rochdale and Oxford, not at Pinehurst, or...
Correct.
Do you want to give Pam some alternate language? Because we said, basically, you know, they could substitute.
One or the other, I mean, there's really, other than the signal, it's very little...
Our traffic comes out Rochdale.
Yeah, our intent is to get the traffic safely out of Rochdale. By putting a light at Pinehurst, all you're gonna do is, you can create traffic still bypassing Rochdale Street.
My thoughts are on it, unless you have solid data, engineering data, to substantiate which improvement is better, and looking at accident history and level of service, it's, you can use your judgment based on knowledge of the area, and I drive through there every day, and I didn't feel comfortable saying, yes, this intersection is the intersection that should be signalized. If there's one to be chosen from, I just felt as though it was wise to gather the data first before we made the decision. And it may turn out to be, it's Rochdale Street. But it's not just warranted, it's warranted and desirable, as to which one's the best, typically.
What I would do here is just, after Oxford Street North, insert where alternate location determined during the definitive plan process. And again, it just leaves you options.
Sure. All right, okay. All right. Next item. Public sewer installation in Rochdale Street, 4,100 feet, between Old Rochdale Street and High Street intersections. Reclaim 4,100 feet of Rochdale Street pavement between Old Rochdale Street and High Street. Minor widening of pavement to provide 24-foot width, where existing shoulder width can accommodate the widening without interfering with private abutting properties or environmental areas. Such improvement shall be substantially, as illustrated by the plans presented to the Auburn Planning Board. It is the understanding and intent of the parties that a 24-foot wide roadway be constructed where feasible, acknowledging there are areas along this segment of road where a 24-foot width would be unattainable or unrealistic. Sounds fine to me.
All right, no. I would just shorten that to unattainable. I don't think we really need unrealistic. If it's unattainable, I think that satisfies the requirement of council's recommendation.
I can delete it throughout.
We're paying her to be here, David. Might as well go with her recommendation.
Well, I'm glad to see that you're finally listening to somebody other than your own voice.
Well, let me just, the difference between the two words is, some things can be achieved, but at great strife, and, you know, if we're talking about like the wetlands filling, right? How far do you go for, you know, if it's a minor difference? So, which is why I said unrealistic.
To get 28-foot wide road, if we could get a 50-foot road, and it means filling in every wetland.
Go for it.
I agree with the chairman. We should, we should have the biggest roads in the entire area.
So, you can land it in the entire...
Just so that we have that.
Then you can fly me out here.
The people love you.
I could be the next president, but it's unattainable. No, I mean, it's unattainable, but unrealistic.
依照 their regulations of their own department, then they can start talking.
I say we leave it.
No, I'm just, me, unattainable.
All right. Again, improve High Street between Rochdale Street and subdivision road beyond a abutting property. Include gravity sewer or alternative as determined by the town engineer and the applicant.
No, I may need help here, because I was doing a little guessing on what we were really trying to accomplish.
Well, again, this is another one of the roads where I considered it was gonna be a subdivision standing up to Rochdale Street, you know.
It's more wetland, so...
Well, yeah, we got a pond on one side and a stream on the other.
Which one do you want us to fill in?
You decide.
No, you're going to the meeting.
Why don't you just do a raised road?
No, you could do like your own small central artery.
I'll volunteer that you remove, remove the...
So, same, whatever we did on the last one, the same thing. Same language as we did last time.
But we don't have the professional pretension to make these determinations.
So, we're gonna put the same language we did on...
Yeah, it's gonna be gravity sewer, there's no alternative.
This is a dirt road from here to here. And then we look into subdivisions.
Does this gravel also here?
Yes.
I'm with you, Ed.
It's a driveway to this house, the town may...
Moving forward.
I don't know what to complain about. The first six months on the board, we would hit to 1:00.
Prove to hear.
You got it easy.
We have a narrow gap there that we...
All right, so...
Okay, I...
With what I had, I wasn't, it wasn't clear.
All right, so you're gonna put the same language as we did on Old Rochdale in that one.
Yeah, but help me on the sewer, because as I said, when I...
We're putting gravity.
Okay, you are doing gravity. Okay, include gravity sewer, period.
Do away with the alternative.
Right, no, this is what, what I had wasn't enough information for me to understand exactly what they were trying to do, and this is the one that was worst for me.
To a limited pump station, though, Dave, we're lifting the road, which is, may not be to town standard, because we're gonna have to hit between two corners of properties, there's two abutters. One out of Rochdale, and the one that's on High Street. We have to hit that narrow gap.
Right, we're gonna have to pick up High Street.
We're gonna be lifting up High Street or down or up and lifts.
Right.
Put in parallel walls, lifting it, but not at 28 feet wide, unless we're totally in the pond and totally in the street.
We're gonna have to do something, I mean...
That's all I'm saying.
This is your other, you know, both easements, you want to cut to, you know, of both access points, you know.
24 feet, which is acceptable, every single planning board from here to Boston, except Austin.
Not of...
It's a big gravity. We lifted the road probably six feet, okay? So, we're narrow, we're...
If we do without a pump station, and we don't have to have personnel go there every day to inspect that pump station.
Oh, I understand. That's why, that's why we changed the road profile, to do that.
Yep, which will be done in a definitive.
Right. So, is there any, other than me getting rid of all the alternative language, is there any other comments at the board that I need?
No, I guess we'll tie it down in the...
The chairman doesn't think that there's anybody else but him commenting. You should know that, right off of that.
Well, that's why my good ear's over here.
Dan, did you have permission to speak?
Who's David's suitor? What you guys do?
We don't, we don't, we don't need permission here.
We would.
Yeah, we would that way.
Oh, wow.
If you notice, my name was the first one mentioned.
No, no one's name, it was just a...
Oh, no, but if you look at the document, they sued me first, rather than anybody else. That's the only reason we were successful.
Yeah, yeah. She's the only one you signed, that's right.
Did you have another comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I just would caution Lloyd, as it is now 11:10, not to enter into extraneous comments. It is liable to excite the attention of the chairman, because he doesn't understand preliminary and definitive.
Every time you chime in, it gets complicated.
I'll make my birthday cake.
No, I mean, he's doing a great job on the subdivision. I don't want to knock him in front of the board.
You're gonna make lunch?
I gotta make lunch.
I'll make lunch if you make my birthday cake at like 5:00 in the morning.
Do you, do you want your kid to be able to eat your birthday cake? You might want to keep.
All right. I, drainage structure and discharge point improvements along Rochdale Street between Old Rochdale Street and High Street intersection. Such improvement shall be substantially, as illustrated by the plans presented to the Auburn Planning Board.
With that previous language from the...
Yes.
Just so that we have that, because it's consistent throughout.
All right.
Although this one's not gonna talk about 24-foot width roads, because we're not talking about roads.
Correct.
All right, J. Reclaim 950 linear feet of Rochdale Street pavement between High Street and North Street, or North limit of Rochdale Street, West Street intersection at a width of, I guess, question mark, and such improvement shall be substantially, as illustrated by the plans presented to the Auburn Planning Board.
We really didn't submit a plan for this. We talked about that we would extend all this rehabilitation work all the way to West Street.
Yes.
Right, continue it beyond High Street all the way west, so...
So, I guess the width, you're still looking at the 24 feet.
24.
We're attainable and all of that.
We're attainable, so it's the same language, you know, unless it's environmentally...
And then, the West Street intersection is the next one, if everybody's all set with the last one.
What'd you guys do with that other subdivision, with West Street? Did you have...
They're gonna put up the three-way stop sign as a temporary thing.
Pending approval, the board has elected.
Right. And you guys were addressing the actual intersection itself.
Which the town engineer will present that, you know, at the board's election, and remind them how vitally important that three-way stop is to the health and welfare of the voting public.
I would think it would come as a recommendation from the planning board, supported by the town engineer.
Absolutely not. I think we need the town engineer.
I think the town planners should do that. Didn't listen to me, though.
You're both gonna, you're both gonna be at the meeting.
You go tip, talk with Lloyd.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go.
So, the next, K. West Street, Rochdale Street, Northwest corner rounding improvement and easement acquisition at a cost not to exceed $10,000. If land issued is resolved, such improvement shall be substantially, as illustrated by the plans presented to the Auburn Planning Board, which is the basically three-stop sign intersection we're talking about. We're still gonna do the right turn lane on West Street coming into... No? I thought that was possible.
No, because actually, that's a very low number. That really didn't improve capacity. The stop sign is what did this. So, we're gonna do the 50-foot rounding on the other corner.
Right, but I thought you were putting a two-lane...
That was put out there in the very beginning.
You remember, your consultant said that would just block the view of the people making left turns. They didn't have a car, they couldn't see who was coming.
There's not many turns.
I mean, if that's the case, I honestly don't recall that. I mean, I'll leave it to the rest of the board.
I do.
Someone still has a memory.
He's agreeing to anything just to get out of here.
Whatever it takes, let's move on.
I thought we were having, I thought we were talking about having it, but...
No, I remember...
But I know we were out there with the heat.
If that's what the heat thinks, I have no problem with it. I just don't remember the heat saying it.
The lefts are so heavy, they can't look through a vehicle parked to the right of them while they're waiting to turn right, so it makes them hesitate even more.
That day we were out there with the heat, he wasn't too crazy about it.
And remember, the right turn, people don't hold anything up, because they go right quick. You know, they're a quick right.
Well, anyways, unless otherwise determined, we'll, we'll, we'll keep the language at this.
All right, realignment and improved radius of Leicester Street curve at Auburn Hills property frontage. Land gift to the town for road corner purposes. Such improvement shall be substantially, as illustrated by the plans presented to the Auburn Planning Board. Do we, do we have a location for this?
Do you have a plan on that?
No, I understand, but I'm just realigning and improved radius of Leicester Street. It doesn't really give a location.
Along our frontage, at Auburn Hills property frontage, which is the sharp corner.
Is that here?
Right, we have a plan on that.
All right, all right.
There's a good plan on that.
And then the, next, M. Realignment and improved radius of Leicester Street 600-foot long curve at Shannon property frontage corner. Land to be gifted from Shannon to the town prior to implementation for road corner purposes. Such improvement shall be substantially, as illustrated by the plans presented to the Auburn Planning Board. Is Mr. Shannon all set with that? Yeah? Okay.
Conceptually...
Have you seen the plan?
We met on the field, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay.
We walked it.
Okay. All right.
Dave, can I just briefly go back to K. for a second? I guess I maybe misunderstood. My, I thought that the original subdivision, Ashworth Hills, was putting in the three-way stops, and that we were gonna realign West Street onto Rochdale with the, soften that curve with the hopes of making that the primary movement, and only having, not always having a three-way stop. So, the intention is that will always be a three-way stop there?
I think, I think that was the intention.
I just want, for my own clarification.
To do that as a full corner, we had to go like 100 feet into the guy's, it was all wetland, right up the end.
No, I know, it's a substantial amount of wetlands.
And it was a large landfilling and all wetland.
We drew that up and showed it at a meeting, but to show how much wetlands we were...
There's that much wetland.
80% in wetlands.
I was up voted 4 to 1.
Okay.
It was a good idea on paper.
Actually, I love the idea.
It's a great idea.
It's kind of funky where you're going from Rochdale Street to West Street.
Now that we know it's not practical, we can go back to the other part of this, so that we can...
And then, the one that isn't on here is the pulverizing and repaving of Leicester Street from the railroad bridge to the town line.
That's how Shannon's corner came up. Because when we were out in the field that day, we were talking about it, and said that we're not gonna do the rest of it, because there's only about half a dozen cars from our site using that road. You said, well, this corner is terrible up by rights, so we're up there...
So, if Shannon's corner doesn't get done, we pulverize and repave the whole stretch.
No, we said we would do that in addition to our corner where we have frontage.
No, but that could be a possibility. I mean, but I don't want to, you know, it's up to you, almost.
It's up to these guys.
No, but it's your, you know, it's your neck of the woods, you know, I don't care. If you wanted to delete the curve improvements, we'll do the pulverizing of the road. Why don't you and Shannon decide?
Well, I think it's...
I mean, you and Tom decide.
I think it's, town, the road is atrocious, and I could've swore we were in agreement before the pulverizing and repaving.
And then we went through all our mitigation...
Because when we went to the landfill...
At our June meeting here, and then that was it, and that wasn't on there.
Right.
And then you said, go up and do your definitive, we'll hire an attorney, we'll get this written up, and now you're kind of throwing it in eight months later.
No, I'm not throwing it in.
It was discussed, I know. It was never agreed to.
I thought it was agreed to. That was my recollection.
Why don't you see, you know...
Because that's really, everything else is timed down. It's really down to that one issue.
Why don't you talk to Bill and debate that Shannon intersection?
Oh, I know, he's very concerned about getting it paved, and he wants to move it up in the mitigation scheme of things.
My, all that I would want to see is that we document that they, that curve doesn't have a significant accident history, which I'm not sure that it does.
I mean, certainly got drainage issues and frost issues and things like that.
I mean, a lot of people argue the shop radii slow people down. We flatten its radius out and increase it, it might speed people up.
Which one are you talking about?
Uh, Shannon.
Shannon. Why, for the time being, put in or, if you don't mind, have put or pulverized, and you guys just can...
I'd have to put it both, but, yeah. Given a choice, I'd move forward.
There's a lot of fun here. No, 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 all this stuff, there'd be a little list.
They take this out.
No, no, no.
And we pave from here.
The applicant was, the previous applicant was...
But not widened to 24.
At $1 million for 26 houses.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Based on the ratio, then that would be...
2.6 billion. Anyways, how do we, how do we massage this to make it...
That's the sticking point, right? I honestly was under the assumption it was all set.
Understanding four boroughs, and you only have four eligible votes.
Right.
So, just understanding that.
I understand that.
I understand that.
Do you understand the history of when that happens?
Yeah, next meeting.
No.
Next meeting, he votes no if you don't do what he says.
Well, I don't think that's fair either.
No, but I honestly, I thought we were completely...
I didn't posit it as fair. I simply said the history.
Because that's, everything else is agreed upon. The only funky thing is these existing town roads that we have to work out.
Yeah, you know what the unfortunate thing is, that I don't know how the rest of the process is gonna go before, you know, we're agreeing to all this stuff now, and quite frankly, you know, are you gonna accept a 24-foot road, or we have to build $150,000 bridge over the other, you know, because you want 28? You know, I mean, it's things that I don't know how we're gonna go down the road, that really affect the economics of this thing. You know, I'd rather leave this in and leave that in good faith, that, you know, if things go right with a definitive, I am happy to do that for you. You know, and I think we've been in good faith all along.
I agree.
Yeah, I know, I mean, the day we were out there, I think we looked at that curve, and I think we'd said that there isn't that much volume and traffic goes by that. And we were just gonna straighten that curve out. I really don't think you...
No, the whole road is coming undone, that whole stretch.
I don't disagree with you.
It is, I mean, it's deplorable.
I think we were talking about the volume and traffic that goes over there.
Yeah, but I mean, Lloyd's, like, a peak hour, we're sending four cars in one hour up that road. I mean, that's like nothing. We're not using that road.
Estimates. We didn't talk about repaving and pulverizing that.
Why don't we go one or the other, which I would, I would, I would pick the pulverizing and repaving of Leicester Street, but I guess I'd hope to get both, but...
Yeah, why don't you put one or the other, if you got that. Did you understand that, Pam?
Do you want me to draft it as an either-or, at least for the purposes of the MOU?
Yeah, I guess.
You know, I gotta keep calling us back which document we're looking at.
It to be decided by the planning board which.
Okay, so...
Which, or perhaps both.
What's that?
Or perhaps both.
Both what?
You know, we might do both.
Oh, yeah, that's...
You know, I mean, if the definitive goes...
Might be the trade-off of the 24-foot cross.
No, I'm saying, if the definitive goes as smoothly as we are playing...
Yes.
You know, we're certainly game for that type of...
Okay, so we will revise L.
He's hanging a carrot, okay.
To include, you're okay?
I sold cars during the day.
Straighten these two or...
We're gonna do this one no matter what.
Yeah.
And it was gonna be, this one would be either that or paved.
Tom, maybe you can, at some point, talk about...
Okay, so it's not these, it's not, it's not both, or paved? If this and that or paved?
Yes.
Okay. And what do we, we say straightening of Shannon's corner, as opposed to the length of road and the pulverizing?
I would say we're leaning towards pulverizing the whole length of road.
Second.
Oh, wait, that one's there. It's M. Okay, so L's okay, and then M is gonna have an or.
We got a meeting next week, we can put them on.
Yes.
There's only three of them.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so M is gonna be the way it's written, or pulverizing and repaving Leicester Street from the Leicester town line to the railroad bridge at the intersection of Leicester Street and Rochdale Street. All right.
Okay.
I'm with you now.
All right. The cost in expense of permitting and construction, constructing the development, including the mitigation package, shall be the responsibility of the applicant. Number four, the board agrees to consider the applicant's volunteered mitigation package in deliberating and rendering its decision on the open space residential special permit. The applicant hereby waives any and all claims now or in the future against board for inclusion of conditions and local permits for the Auburn Hills development related to volunteered mitigation package, including claims that such conditions are invalid.
I need a period.
All right.
Now, the other, the only, the only thing that I have is, we should have something in here that says that it's binding, say these gentlemen decide to sell it, we still have something. We approve it, three months down the line, they decide, we'd rather retire to Opa-rotan and have a wonderful time down there.
You read my emails.
It's looking pretty good right now.
It may look good, but it's still working.
Well, how is this binding on successes or assigns?
Well, I just think it...
Yeah. We could insert a, I don't, the realistic thing is, when you get to, if the board relied on this package that you committed to in rendering its decision, and you assigned your rights immediately after decision or whatever, could someone come back and argue that they didn't commit to it? Well, that's part of what the board relied on. I don't think it hurts you to put successes or assigns here, though.
Yeah.
So, what I'll do is, in the second whereas on the first page, define Brendan as including its successes and its successes and its signs.
Because let's say we didn't build it, and then somebody comes in, maybe it has a senior retirement community that want to build up there, you might have a whole new, settle a list, you know, for them, so you might end up wanting to change your mind.
Well, I guess that said, we can, actually, we do. Number four, that we just reviewed, in rendering its decision on the open space residential development special permit. So, if there's a new proposal, you're just unfortunately starting all over again.
Right.
You might be able to tap a lot of this to say, can you do this, can you do this, can you do this? Because I don't think it's all a lot.
Well, there's a gigantic over 55 community on the other side of Leicester that I drive by every day.
This seven of them in Leicester.
And there's, and it has, there has not been, there's not been a spade used. So, I don't think at any time soon with the housing market, you're going to get a lot of seniors.
Maybe 10 or 15 years.
Yeah.
Actually, conceivable. That Auburn senior...
And do we have...
But that was at a different time.
Are we doing the other document?
Onto the decision.
And these guys, it looks like they're packing up.
Are we doing the decision tonight? Well, I don't know.
I don't have the, do we have the definitive?
I can't, I did the decision last meeting.
You did?
Yes.
With instructions to do your homework.
And, and I believe, actually, Mr. Chairman, you instructed everybody to go home and read the decision and look at the order of the mitigation and come back with comments and ideas of where they...
I remember the order of mitigation, I don't, I don't remember that at all. Actually, while we're on that subject...
You know what, I even have an extra one for you, Dave.
Yeah, here's mine.
Drop this out, yep.
That's a...
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying it's January, you got to do some real copy, so I'm worried.
Let's, let's talk about that for a minute. The order of mitigation a little bit, just so we're on the same page, because I know the town engineer is very concerned about Leicester Street coming undone. And it's, the mitigation that you listed, I think, was more towards the subdivision mitigation. What if we put Leicester Street in front of extending the sewer from Old Rochdale Street to, to, what's it?
First, High. To High?
Yeah.
Or we actually need that to...
Yes, so it's not really mitigation.
Well, yeah.
Well, it is if we put a pump station in the corner and went back into our slate.
Yeah, we never did. There's a million dollars.
I thought he, I thought he asked...
Wouldn't it be better? With all due respect to the planning board, I think the town engineer might have a lot of good thoughts on what's the proper sequence, you know, because he's thinking road construction and right things to do. I wonder if we could get together and have like a little work session where we kind of hone this thing down? You know, I mean, I don't think tonight, if we go through every, we're going to be bouncing around for three hours. Nobody's going to join in.
I don't think that we can go through this tonight.
No.
I agree.
Why don't, is, I, I'd be more than satisfied if you and Adam kind of kick things around with these guys to get it in a formation that you guys are comfortable with, and then you can send the, send the order to us.
Yeah, if we could meet during the week, then you could make a recommendation to the board...
Yep.
A week before the next meeting, and your guys' responsibility will be to read it and...
Yeah.
And comment.
I was going to say, I'm happy to coordinate with you. But, and I think you're probably the best person to...
Would you want to sit with us to go through this or have Adam and I sit with them and then get the information to you?
Can you do a conference call?
And we might be able to, for Adam and I to go through it with them, and then what we come up with, we can then forward to you for your review.
Yeah, I was going to say, it might be difficult to do it over the phone.
Right, yeah.
Because there's going to be plans and...
It's hard to see.
Yeah.
I'm happy to come down, but my guess is that you're talking about the details of local conditions that I'm less familiar with. I mean, I could certainly be drafting, but...
I think that if we give you, you know...
Tell me the sequence of events.
Yeah, I think...
Including, I think, your comment about wanting to only go through one winter, which may tweak, you know, may move something from a later phase to putting it in a phase, but saying, you know, you got a year to do it, or you got a season to do it, or some additional test.
So, if we came up with an agreement, I think Adam's a pretty effective communicator to Pam.
Yeah.
And then Pam, you could get out a version to these guys, to everybody.
Yep, that's right.
Can we have that next week is my question.
At that, why don't we leave it at that and we continue the decision to the next meeting?
We have to, they work it out.
The 27th or the 20th?
My question is, will we have it?
I think it's going to be more appropriate to go to the 27th because I don't see meeting with, with Bob and Lloyd and then getting Pam the information and actually having something for the board to look at prior to the meeting. Yeah, in, in a week, it just, it doesn't seem feasible to me.
Well, rather than go through all the expenses of that, why don't we have the two of you meet with these gentlemen and give us the recommendations of the next meeting? And then, because if the board sits there and says, this is your recommendation, we don't agree with it.
Yeah.
Rather than expend money and time and be better spent elsewhere...
Yes. And then, maybe we invite Pam to the next, the 27th to find, try to finalize. Do we have, how are we doing in 20?
After tonight?
I was going to say, we're bleeding pretty hard after tonight. I think we're, we're nearing the end of our rope. We were given $5,000 and I think at the...
I can look at the numbers.
The last bill you were in the low threes.
Yeah, because you just got one, right?
Right, but we'll pay, I mean, if it takes another grand to get this thing written up, you know, whatever. It's only money.
I like this guy. You're willing to put that in writing?
I like the attitude. You want to buy more property in Auburn, more development?
I can look at all my town power and tell you where you are.
That would be great.
As close I can come down.
Okay.
You have to invite Pam for another meeting.
No one missed that, man.
The applicant volunteered to give us... We listen very intently.
Okay, please, how much meeting time?
27th, we get anything early so we can...
Yeah, 7:30.
Just before us.
Why don't we have it subbed?
You guys can set something up. At 7:00, we have A and Rs. At 7:05, we have lot releases.
We can do A and Rs later.
Okay, so you want to put this on 7:05?
Do you ever meet a little early?
Camera 27, 7:05.
A lot of my towns meet at 7:30.
Okay, so we're going to move this for 7:00 on the 27th?
Yes.
Yes.
Poor lady, our poor pocketbook.
I never agreed with that.
You already got me at $100 an hour discount.
I have three decisions to be signed, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I've actually, I've actually had a few town, Merimac's another one that...
What's good for you?
They came to some...
Tomorrow.
A while ago. Yeah, I've been total for a while.
We have DCG at 10:00.
I've done several in April.
Thursday would have to be like 2:00.
About Thursday, like at 8:30?
We'd have to be done at 10:00, though.
Yeah.
Well, Friday.
Yeah, how about Friday morning?
Friday, yeah, early for me, that's fine.
9:00 Friday?
9 o'clock Friday. So, you're here, well, where are we meeting?
Right here. Okay, thank you, board.
This next meeting is just a discussion, yeah, on the 27th, continue. Where we stand with public hearing wise.
Well, you should have final documents to vote that night.
That's right.
Yeah, as far as I know, your hearing is still open.
Get this off the table.
Yes, but...
It's been continued till the end of the month.
To the 27th.
The, the public hearing is effectively continued until the 30th of January.
But you're meaning...
By signature of the applicant.
Okay.
That's by agreement, but you as a board, you actually should make a motion.
We continue it to something.
Yes, you need to make a motion, continue it to the 27th.
This is in a public hearing tonight, though.
Right.
It's a discussion. When did we continue the last public hearing, I guess is my question.
It's a public hearing.
It's still a continuation of a public hearing.
They weren't supposed to participate, it was just between us, but...
Tonight?
Last week.
Yeah.
No, it was last week we sat back.
Your hearing is still open, so you actually, it's...
This is still a public hearing.
Yeah, it's still a public hearing.
I advertise this as a public hearing?
You don't need to advertise it.
It was advertised two years ago, so that was all the advertising.
Advertise it one other time.
This is just a continuation of the public hearing.
I'll make a motion, we continue it to January, January the 27th at 7:00.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, it is a vote. Do we have, do we have, let's get them to sign.
Decision. Pam, very nice meeting you.
Thank you. They were, they were already signed.
We were already signed.
As you can tell, we need a lot of help.
Oh, you're not the only one.
It's, they have a 30-day continuance from the 31st of December.
I wrote the form.
Well, don't go anywhere, signatures.
Actually, can we, I would like to look at those because there's something missing. Can we just do that next week?
That's up to you, they were in your packets.
I know, but I didn't read it.
What's missing?
I'll tell you when I have it myself to spare. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, we got bills.
Second.
We'll do it next week.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed, it is a vote.